Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of February 9, 2023, to order. I want to start by introducing Ashton Harris, Jr. He is nine years old and in the third grade at Kawea Elementary School. He's on the Yucca Valley Third, Fourth Grade Basketball Team. He practices jujitsu and he's in the Robotics Club. He enjoys art, hikes, and Minecraft. Ashton, can you stand up to the mic?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ashton. And as always, if your child of whatever age would like to do the pledge, let me know, and we're happy to have them here. All right. City Clerk, can we please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
There.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the agenda, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like to remove from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote?
I just want to, I don't need to pull it, but can I comment on K?
Go ahead.
Doesn't need to be pulled. I'm in favor of it, but I would request that we stay the implementation until the new city manager gets here.
To the city attorney, would that require us to pull this item and have a separate discussion and vote?
I'm sorry, I missed the comment. Can you repeat that, councilmember?
I'm in favor of the item, K, but just want to make sure that our new city manager has the opportunity to put his arms around it.
I think to play it safe, we can pull that and bring it back at a later date then.
Teresa, go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think we may want to hear from HR on the impacts of waiting on that item, if you want to have a discussion about that.
Okay. Councilmember DeHart, do you want to pull the item then for further discussion?
No, we'll go forward.
Okay. All right, then we'll move forward.
Thank you.
At this time...
On that note, although, I'd be happy to reach out and discuss that with him.
Great, thank you.
As an information item.
Great, thank you. At this time, can we have the city attorney to provide a report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public, the City Council met in closed session this evening pursuant to the items listed on the posted agenda. Council provided direction to staff, but no reportable action was taken. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comments will not be taken until later in this evening. Our first speaker is Michael Horn, followed by Ed McBride.
Honorable Mayor Gardner and City Council Members, the item is 1J, and it concerns the second reading of ordinance 2082. In particular concern is the provision 5.77.050 regarding an automatic suspension of a business license should there be more than two overdoses in the establishment in one year. I respectfully request not adding this provision to the ordinance, as it will not solve the problem of overdoses and put the onus on the business owner, who has no way of knowing what interactions of drugs the person is presenting. I've been in the business 25 years, I've never had this kind of a provision, and I know my customers. And I don't understand why an adult business would be any different than the White Party. I don't know how many overdoses the White Party has, or any music festival, or any clothing optional hotel. So why did this all of a sudden happen? And I would request that you just take a look at it and see if there's any meat to this. I would prefer to work with the police department, I'd be happy to work, you know, in a commission or a group to try to solve the overdose problem, but this, putting the onus on the business owner, just doesn't seem right to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ed McBride, followed by David Sidley.
Honorable Mayor Gardner and City Council Members and Staff, I'm speaking to Agenda Item 3C. My name is Ed McBride, I'm a business owner here in Palm Springs, and I have served as an appointed trustee of the library for six years. I am a librarian by education, and I have been committed to libraries all of my professional life. A large group of citizens that are represented here tonight, many rows, thank goodness, have spent thousands of hours trying to find ways to improve and secure funding for our library and enhance our library services. Tonight, I urge all of you to continue this work and to approve Agenda Item 3C and to work with our community to fund the full renovation required to make our library a world-class library, and that's borrowing the words of Honorable City Council Members Hostage and Middleton. The community stands ready to get behind this project and to finally make this dream a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Sidley, followed by Rebecca Olarte.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is David Sidley, and I'm the president of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. I'm here this evening with members of the foundation to show our support for Items 1E and 3C on tonight's agenda. The sole purpose of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation is to support the Palm Springs Public Library and to increase and broaden its use as a cultural and educational institution through financial support. To that end, we stand ready to support the library renovation project and will conduct a capital campaign to raise the necessary funds to bridge any financial gap between our collective dreams and the funding reality. In other words, think big. We encourage you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, city and library staff, and the citizens of Palm Springs to support financially, through your hard work and advocacy, the vision of a truly world-class, a truly world-class library for a truly world-class city. The time has come for us to roll up our sleeves, dig in, and work together to make the Palm Springs Public Library a 21st century institution that will serve the people of Palm Springs for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rebecca Olarte, followed by Paurvi Doshi.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Rebecca Olarte, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on Agenda Item 3C as a member of the Board of Directors of the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. First, thank you to city and library staff for all of the work that has been put into the library renovation project thus far, and in advance of the work that is required to complete this project. We find ourselves as a truly exciting moment for the Palm Springs Library, but it is just that, a moment. We have a very short amount of time to ensure a world-class library for this community, one that can provide for today's residents while anticipating the needs of the next generation. I want to echo David's statement that the foundation is ready to support the library and library staff in this adventure. A library can be a place of refuge and solace, a launchpad for journeys across time and space, and a lifeline to the world through information and technology. As someone who grew up choosing the library over the playground every day, I look forward to the foundation's continued partnership with the city to nurture, safeguard, and support the Palm Springs Library for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Paurvi Doshi, followed by Todd Webster.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Paurvi Doshi, Senior Public Affairs Manager for Picasso, and I'm here to speak on Item E. I wanted to start by thanking the mayor and city council members for keeping an open mind and giving us this opportunity to come up with an agreement that can work for both of us and the city, for both us and the city of Palm Springs. We also wanted to thank city attorney Jeff Ballinger and city manager Teresa Galavan for their efforts in getting us to this point. As you can see in the staff report and the attachments, it's been a really long road to get here, but we have taken to heart the concerns that were voiced in the last council meeting and have made a good faith effort to address those concerns. I know all of you are familiar with our basic model, but here are a few facts about how Picasso operates and chooses its properties. In the proposed ordinance, we have agreed not to purchase any homes under the two times, under two times the median home price, to ensure that we are not utilizing any workforce housing. We have also agreed to limit acquisitions to one home per block. A couple other factors we hope you consider is that Picasso pays cash for our homes, furnishes them, and equips them, so the acquisitions process is fairly costly. As part of our business model, we only purchase turnkey properties, never fixer-uppers or remodels, which further limits the housing stock available to us. We feel that together, these factors sufficiently address the issue of how many homes we would purchase. An economic impact study conducted last year showed that Picasso homes have an 89% occupancy rate, whereas the typical second home has an 11% occupancy rate. Our owners are spending time in your stores and restaurants, many of our owners pay cash for their share, but if they do utilize the funding Picasso has available, they are still required to put down a hefty down payment. So our owners have a very large financial stake in the property and a large stake in the community. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city, and I want to thank you all for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Todd Webster, followed by Jennifer Broxmayr.
I am a property manager for Picasso, and I've lived in this community for 18 years. I know this town well, I love this city. Part of my job is to oversee these properties and ensure that these homes are well-maintained and our owners have an amazing second home experience, while also ensuring the operating agreements and good neighbor policies are being adhered to. I'm proud of the work I've done over the years as a professional home manager. We care about the community and are invested in being a part of it. We hire many local businesses, the upkeep of the homes, including private chefs, gardeners, housekeepers, house maintenance managers, pool maintenance companies, air conditioning companies, plumbers, and also local stores, florists, places like Jensen's, and multiple restaurants and shops. My owners are from many varied backgrounds, but they have one thing in common with all of us. They love Palm Springs, and they're here to enjoy the desert environment. They are not here as weekend warriors. They're not here to cause mischief. They have a vested interest in being a good neighbor, and being part of a neighborhood that they're going to be connected to for the foreseeable future. I strive to provide an excellent experience for our owners, while also protecting and preserving the properties within excellent condition. We look forward to continuing our positive experience with the city and the community moving forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jennifer Broxmayr.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jen Broxmayr. This is my son, Simon, who's seven, and my husband is back at our Picasso house with our three-year-old daughter. We are from the Bay Area, and we fell in love with Palm Springs several years ago, but it's only through Picasso that we've been able to afford to buy here. And we've been down six times in the last year. Our children learned how to swim in the pool at our house. Every morning, we go to different cafes, we stock up for days from Sherman's and shop at Ralph's, and we donate and come every year for the film festival. We very much feel like members of this community, and also very much understand the desire of the city council and residents to protect it, and we feel the same way. Most importantly, we are very active users of the library, and our kids, we go once or twice every trip, we'd be happy to support any capital campaign. And again, just want to say thank you, we feel very relieved at the agreement that Picasso has reached with the city, because it means that we can keep coming down here for years to come as our kids grow. Thank you.
I love Palm Springs, because I've been here for a while, it's really fun, I love going in the pool, and my family loves it, and it is fantastic, and I also love going up the mountains for hikes, and I'm starting to come along more with also my friends.
Thank you. We have all the kids today, I love it. We're now moving on to our public comment queue that is on the phone. We have Eric England. If we do not have Eric...
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Eric.
Good evening. I too am appearing on Item 3E on Picasso, and I appear on behalf of six neighbors to the illegal Picasso timeshare at 580 West Pangaway, and we strongly object to any proposed ordinance accommodating Picasso's existence in a residentially zoned neighborhood. What was once a house in a quiet neighborhood has become a party house for eight different owners or their friends, rotating in and out, typically for a long noisy weekend. Instead of ours spending that time enjoying tranquility, we're forced to spend time trying to contact the itinerant residents, Picasso, and Palm Springs authorities to quiet them down. Most of the time, none of that works, and we are forced to close our doors and windows and wait until they leave town. So Picasso means we give up quiet for noise. We bought in a single-family residential neighborhood, and Picasso should not be allowed to change the zoning. The value of our homes and the quality of our lives decreases so that Picasso can make money. Say no to Picasso. If you are going to say yes, we emphatically ask that you, and we emphatically ask that you say no, we implore you to hold them to the same standards you've worked so hard to craft for vacation rental properties. They are noisy neighbors. Keep in mind the facts. Picasso paid 3.35 million to buy a house in a residential neighborhood. They have illegally converted it to an eight-unit timeshare. They're flipping it for 5.28 million.
Next, we have Michael Hirschbein.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Michael Hirschbein, and I am talking to you this evening as a member of and representing the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, to express our support for the approval of Item 3C on tonight's agenda, directing staff to issue the request for qualifications for consultants required for the library enhancement project. We would also urge council to approve, including the full scope of work for all phases in RFQ instructions. Regarding the actual scope of work that eventually gets approved, the Friends would like to go on record as supporting the full scope of work as outlined in your staff report, including an onsite auditorium and complete renovation of the Frye Building. Further, we believe that all work should be completed in a single phase. Current library practice recognizes that circulating books is no longer the only or even main function of a modern institution. More and more people are looking for authentic experiential encounters, including making things, meeting in small groups, joining book clubs, attending storytelling events, and attending talks and demonstrations. Our new facility must be able to accommodate all this and more. We are expecting our newly-built library to be an asset for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Pfefferman.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Gardner and members of City Council. I too am here to speak about Picasso and giving, hoping that you will reconsider your position. I've lived here in Ascena Community for the past six years. When I first moved here from New York City to Palm Springs, because I love the community of Palm Springs. I'm speaking tonight because of the possible changes from a community of caring people to a community driven by corporations and profits. We have a community of people who look out to take care of one another. In the Picasso Corporation, if the Picasso Corporation is allowed to go forward, we are opening up the door that could change the culture of our community. For people, from people first to profits first, or corporations will survive. Like the county of Santa Rosa, we rely on tourism to support our way of life. Please hold strong firm and not open the door of change in a direction that we may regret later on. I choose to live in Palm Springs like you, because of who we are for each other. We take care of one another. Thank you for your time, and please choose wisely.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Cecil.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner, members of the City Council and city staff. Thank you all for your service to our Palm Springs community. My name is Don Cecil. I am Robert's neighbor in Ascena. I apologize for not being with you in person, and I hope I can support 3C and also continue in on speaking to Item 3E. Picasso and the corporate business model is the opposite of what I believe Palm Springs needs, to create new homeownership opportunities for residents and families, and also socioeconomic levels in life. When I read the list of assurances outlined in the staff report to protect existing neighborhoods... When I read the list of assurances outlined in the staff report to protect existing neighborhoods from these properties, if it takes all those rules and regulations to be proffered in a PR crisis, how could this be something that is good for our neighborhoods and our neighbors? And we're certainly not alone in questioning Picasso. Other tourism-based California communities are saying no and asking tough questions. Tonight, it's Picasso. Soon, it'll be build-to-rent or single-family rental in Palm Springs, Cathedral City, other cities in the area. Institutional landlords typically own properties through corporate vehicles. It shields them from scrutiny and responsibility. Congress held hearings last year in the House and the Senate about the concept of corporate-owned single-family housing. These landlords enjoy an outsized power and influence, and I would say that in supporting tenants, homebuyers, and the quality of life in Palm Springs, you'll have one opportunity to fully understand and regulate corporate-affiliated, single-family homeownership, build-to-rent, or other models, and I would implore you to learn more before saying yes or no to any of them. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nancy Morrison. Is Nancy still on the line? Doesn't look like it. City Clerk, do we have any additional comments that have come in?
We have no additional commenters.
Hi.
Oh, hi. Is Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
I was speaking, but I guess you couldn't hear me. Okay, I just wanted to say, this is Nancy Morrison. I'm the president of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library, and I just want to endorse everything that everyone has said in support of the library tonight. But the point that I would really like to make is that I will feel very strongly we need to send this out for RFQ, just as it is proposed. Putting it in phases, it'll never happen. The first phase may happen, but we'll never then get the auditorium and all the other things that we really need. We do so many programs at the library, and we're also doing the Palm Springs Speaks, and there's so much more we could do if we had an auditorium on site. People, today, we have to put up chairs, take chairs down. The library does a lot of work when they have to do this, and they take it down because they're putting up tables for a meeting. It just isn't the way a big-city library like Palm Springs should operate. And here we have neighboring cities like Desert Hot Springs and Cincella that have brand-new libraries, and Palm Springs hasn't been renovated since it was built in the seventies. It is time for us to do everything that needs to be done. We need to send it out for the full endorsement, find out how much it can cost, and then the Friends will support the foundation and go out to the community and raise the funds. This is a community building that we need to be proud of. Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you. At this time, I actually had meant to do this earlier, but we do have an update regarding Crossley Road. A very short update. Chief?
Turning on the mic. That took half the time, I think. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to give an update to council, over the past few weeks, we have documented 290 individuals who are unhoused in our city. Of the 290, each person has been handled some multiple times. Resources that they can apply for and that they can contact should they so desire. In addition to that, as council knows, we have identified four hotspot locations: Vista Chino and Sunrise, the southern part of the downtown area, Crossley and Ramone, and East Palm and Sunrise. And those, according to research, if we focus on those as hotspots, we're able to reduce the crime associated with those locations. We are not concerned about the status of an individual, but the behaviors associated with the drug usage and theft that occurs at some of these locations. So those four have been our hotspots. As a result, Crossley and Ramone was cleared out because of health conditions that were present at that location. We were assisted greatly by the very responsible ownership of the shopping plaza, as well as some of the businesses there, who are able to make sure that people were not camping on their property, and that also allowed us to go in and make sure that the sidewalk was passable, as well as the health issues that we saw there were abated. So that has been broken up, and again, everybody has referred. Six people have been housed in emergency shelters, and 15 people have been given overnight stays at the shelter at Martha's Kitchen. In addition to that, five have been sent to, or reunited with their families at other locations around the nation. And we are continuing to talk with people and work with them to make sure that they have the opportunity to avail themselves of resources or going home should they so desire. We have also, in addition to that, made scores of arrests of people who were wanted on various felonies and misdemeanors, and we will continue to move forward and press on helping people find the resources should they desire to avail themselves of those resources. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Do any council members have any questions for the chief before we move on? No. Mayor Protam, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say thank you for addressing that. I know a lot of the community has been concerned about it and appreciates it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, I do want to second those thoughts and express our appreciation, not only to the Police Department, but the ownership of the mall that worked with us to make sure that we were following up on their expression of their property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I believe we have a request for an item to be pulled. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just hearing public comment, I would love to pull Item 1J for separate discussion. I can also make a motion at the same time, if you'd like, to
Please.
approve the consent calendar with Item 1J removed for separate discussion.
Is there a second? A second by Councilmember DeHart. City Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Bernstein?
Yes.
Mayor Garner?
Yes.
Five yeses, zero nos. Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we will review Item 1J, which is the second reading and adoption of the Adult Oriented Business Ordinance. Would you, Councilmember, would you like a staff report on that?
Not generally. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just ask, you heard the public comment about the 5.77.050 violation and penalty showing any adult-oriented business with two or more overdoses of regulated narcotics occur within any 12-month period shall be subject to revocation of its business license with automatic suspension of its business license pending final resolution of license revocation proceedings, just for the public who are following along. So for city staff, you heard a number of comments and public comment, including this isn't included in other ordinances or other requirements of businesses. So could you just respond and share how we came to this and then what the process would look like? So it's an automatic revocation? Would there be an appeal process? So maybe it's a joint question to the Chief of Police and then to city staff as well? Thank you.
I think I can, Councilmember Hostage, I think I can start off with why the inclusion in the ordinance. I think in talking to other police departments around the state who have similar ordinances, we see that there has been a problem with usage of drugs at some facilities. And so we don't want to be in a position where we're now playing catch-up afterward and trying to revokeate a license on the back end of it after there are problems. This is not an uncommon standard, as we also hold liquor stores to a pretty high standard, as well as other locations, and we want to make sure that these don't turn into a problematic location in the future. So it seemed reasonable to us that after two overdoses, that there could be an automatic revocation, and I think the discussion was, and maybe it can be, Deputy Center Manager Flynn can add to it, but there'd be a process where it would be a hearing before there is a permanent suspension of the license, and I'd have to go back and read the actual ordinance to make sure.
What we would propose doing is adding standard appeal language, as we have in other sections of the code, to address that because it's not clear, the way we wrote it, that there is an appeal process, so we'd be happy to do that, and that's a minor correction that doesn't require us to go back to additional readings.
Thank you. I also thought it was unclear whether there was an appeal process and the appeal process applied, so I just wanted to, so thank you for that and just raise it with council and see if there are any other questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
I think as long as there's going to be appeal process, that seems fair to me.
Thank you. Chief, do we have overdose problems at any other businesses? Nightclubs? Maybe?
At certain events, we do have overdose problems, like for instance, as mentioned, the White Party. I know that we've had as many as a dozen, fifteen in one day, although that's a pretty large crowd, where we do have overdoses. And we want to make sure, again, that these locations don't become a nuisance to the public and with police and fire, sapping police and fire resources, and that was the purpose of it. So yes, we have had other problems at other locations.
My question really is if there are nightclubs where we're seeing two or more drug overdoses, but yet their business license isn't revoked, that's a concern of mine. If we don't see that happening at these other businesses, I'm a little bit less concerned, but it does seem like a double standard because people do drugs at nightclubs as well.
Madam Mayor, I would agree with you, and I'd be happy to include that into the ordinance, that any establishment, liquor establishment or other where we have a trend line of overdoses would, you know, could receive an automatic suspension or at least a hearing where, you know, there is some serious discussion about the operational side of that business.
Okay, so you do see this as something that should apply to all businesses as a public safety and health and resource issue?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I was just going to add that for conditional use permits, we typically have language that if there's any safety issues, we have the ability to revoke a conditional use permit. And I think you'll recall, we had a hearing with a certain nightclub a couple of years ago where that was the case. And so we do have language in our conditional use permits. We as staff will make sure we also have language in our land use permits that we issue for special events as well, so that we're applying the same standard equally across all businesses.
So drug overdoses would be included in those safety issues?
Yes, they would be.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Councilmember DeHart?
Flynn, is this paragraph a carryover from the prior ordinance? Or is this a new paragraph that we put in?
No, it's a carryover. It was part of the discussion from January the 26th.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Just to be clear, this is from the January reading. This was not carried over from 20 years ago.
That is correct. It's a recent addition and was not in the 1995 ordinance.
So I just, you know, I just want to make, if I can make a comment, that I understand that an establishment is not in complete control of what all of their patrons do, but clearly drug issues have become a big problem in our society, and we've seen a lot in Palm Springs. So the goal is not, is to bring everybody up to this standard, and I agree that if the owner is actually working with us and they go through a public hearing and are addressing the issue, then, you know, it should not be automatic. But I don't want to just leave it out because I think we have to address this as a city, and we're seeing this happening all too often, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question if I can. So I appreciate you putting this in, and I agree with the comments of my colleagues, and I agree that we want to treat businesses similarly, so we see similar issues with nightclubs and other locations. I appreciate you, that we're not singling out any type of business. So could you just explain the number two, and how that was picked and how, you know, because you can imagine as a business owner, you know, you're not in charge of what people are bringing in or, you know, doing before they come into the business. So how did you pick the number two? Is it two separate incidents? Would that show a pattern? Is it just like two people come in and they've done drugs ahead of time and they both overdosed? Right, I mean, you can imagine all the scenarios. So you have the expertise as our police chief, so could you just explain how you got to the number two? If it would be two people overall in one year or two separate incidents and your reasoning for that number?
It came up to the number two after a discussion among staff members, what would seem reasonable, but yet be able to nip it in the bud as soon as we see a pattern. And it seemed to us that the standard of two would allow us to get on the front side of it rather than having an experience where we have numerous overdoses. I don't feel necessarily, you know, locked in to just two. I mean, if it was a small number, that is the intent behind it, to make sure that we don't have a practice and pattern of ignoring problems as they arise.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, to just clarify for this item, if you're going to be making sure that the appeal portion is in there, is this going to have to come back to us again for final approval?
No, it will not because the language is standard in other sections of the code. It's just a clarification point and doesn't require us to come back.
Right. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeHart moves. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mayor Protam. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Garner?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing for an application by the Villa Roma Homeowners Association for Historic District Designation of the Villa Roma Garden Homes located at 2500 South Sierra Madre Drive. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The first public hearing tonight is an application by the Villa Roma Homeowners Association seeking a historic district designation for the Villa Roma Garden Homes located at 2500 South Sierra Madre Drive. As a point of clarification, this is a district designation which differs from our more typical site designation process. A district includes multiple parcels under separate ownership which share common characteristics and which together exemplify exceptional historic value. The individual sites and buildings within a district are called contributing resources and are subject to their own evaluation of significance, for significance. A designation application can be initiated by the city or by any authorized member of the district under consideration. In this case, the Homeowners Association is representing a majority of the homeowners and made the application. The site itself is just under four acres in size, located in the city's south and east of South Palm Canyon Drive, and is fee land located within the Agua Caliente Reservation. As such, the application was also referred to the tribe for review by their historic preservation officer. The Villa Roma development was constructed in 1964 and contains 69 condominium units within 19 different residential buildings and includes a handful of common areas, including a clubhouse, pool, corner park, and shared carports. On this slide, we are showing you some pictures for context of what the development looks like as it exists today, including entry gate features, front entries, landscaping, the carports that I mentioned, and other architectural community elements, architectural and community elements. As to the process, the municipal code indicates that a historic district may be designated provided that the following three findings can be made. First, that the proposed district and all contributing resources within it exhibit exceptional historic significance. The code provides a series of criteria to be used in evaluating significance, including association with significant persons or events, exemplifying a particular period of history, or type or period of construction, or being the work of a significant artist or designer or architect. Second, that the Second, that the contributing resources within the proposed district have been evaluated and ensure, to ensure they maintain the integrity, the integrity of the district. And finally, that the majority of the sites within the district containing contributing resources that also exhibit exceptional historic significance and meet the above criteria based on an evaluation of their individual merits. These findings are intended to ensure that the designation of any historic district is premised not just on the merits of the area, but also on the significance and value of the sites and structures within it. In support of their application, the Villa Roma Homeowners' Association submitted an assessment of the development which concluded that designation was appropriate given its history and embodiment of garden city and garden apartment architecture of the era. The Historic Site Preservation Board considered the application first in June of 2022 and recommended that the site be designated, along with all associated development being defined as contributing structures, meaning that they too possess exceptional historic significance. It is important to note that the board did not undertake individual evaluation of the historic integrity of each of those contributing structures as is required by the code. This designation would allow each property to receive tax reductions through Mills Act contracts, which are intended to fund the preservation and restoration of the city's most important historic resources. While we certainly appreciate the passion that the residents have for their community, staff's analysis, which was provided to both the homeowners' association and to the HSPB, concluded that both the site and the structures within lacked historic integrity and did not represent exceptional historic significance as contemplated by our historic preservation ordinance. To warrant, meaning that, you know, we did not believe that it warranted the designation and we did not recommend approval to the HSPB at that time. Staff documented changes to the property over the years that have diminished the historic integrity and concluded that this development is not exemplary of the garden apartment typology typical of this period and therefore not of significant historic significance. Again, staff flagged that there has also been no evaluation of the onsite building and structures to ensure compliance with the code's requirement that a majority of the properties and buildings within the district constitute exceptional historic significance and integrity. As I mentioned, designation would allow the properties to receive tax reductions through the Mills Act and staff are concerned about the long-term integrity of the city's historic preservation, preservation program if designation is granted without clearly meeting the criteria established in our code. As the property is within the reservation, the application was also circulated to the tribe's historic preservation officer, as I mentioned, who concurred with staff's conclusion that designation of the site is not warranted at this time. Despite this analysis, the HSPB did vote to advance a favorable recommendation to council and the resolution in your packages tonight would grant the historic designation in accordance with their recommendation. Alternatively, should the council not wish to grant the historic district designation, you may vote to deny the resolution that is in your packages. This concludes my presentation and both myself and Ken Lyons are available for questions. And I know that the applicants are also present to speak to this as well.
Thank you. At this time, do, does council have questions for staff? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So just to clarify, that it's on tribal land. If, if the tribe says no and we say yes, we could still be historic?
That's correct. So there, it's an advisory comment and you do have the option to designate the property despite the recommendation.
Okay. And with the Mills Act, this means every homeowner on the property would get a tax property?
It's not automatic. They would have to go through a process to obtain the contract through the city council and the city manager, but they would be eligible through our current ordinance if they were designated, meaning that all 69 properties could qualify.
And is there a financial difference to the city or is that all state tax?
It would, it would be a portion of it would be city property tax.
Okay. And, and typically in these things, you know, you, there seems to be a difference, exceptional historic significance. And I know we've made other buildings historic that may have had changes over the years or for better, usually for worse, but have still become historic. And we have, we have done that in the past, is that correct?
We have done that in the past. I think it's about evaluating, you know, the, the site or the structure, you know, what's going on holistically and looking at it within the context of what's going on to determine, you know, if the changes were significant enough to, to prevent us from designating it or sort of what the context is. I think here, Ken Lyons, who was our historic preservation of the officer at the time that this was reviewed, and looking at it with his expertise, determined that, you know, generally the, the site itself is not representative of the sort of mid-century architecture that we have come to designate in Palm Springs and that the changes were made, that were made were such that it didn't sort of rise to the level of historic significance at this point. So that was the determination that we made as staff.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, historic significance doesn't have to be mid-century.
No, sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, let me clarify. So the report itself was highlighting certain architectural elements associated with mid-century architecture of garden apartments and garden city architecture. And that was sort of the impetus for them submitting the application. And staff's review believed that it didn't rise to the level of significant historic, significant historic resource as contemplated by our ordinance as, as presented in the report that they submitted.
Okay. So it's just, so that part of the exceptional, that, that's somewhat subjective, the, that part? Okay. But the objective part that you've claimed, that you've said in here is that they didn't evaluate all of the individual elements?
That's correct. Yes. I would say that the determination of whether it's exceptional or not is subjective. And so they submitted a report which provides a different view of it and they'll, they can certainly speak to that when we get to public hearing. But the, you know, from staff's perspective, there is a requirement and it's, you know, in the findings that are no longer on the screen. But, but each of the findings speak to an evaluation of each of the individual contributing resources also rising to a level of exceptional significance. And that evaluation and that finding was not made by the HSPB. So staff's concern is that we have not looked holistically at each of the, the buildings within the development to make that determination and therefore cannot find that a, the designation of the, the district is warranted because it does require that a majority of the sites and buildings within the site rise to that level and that evaluation was not undertaken.
Yeah. So just to clarify, I mean, if they looked at everything individually, they would comply with the ordinance and then it becomes a subjective thing as to whether it's historical, exceptional or not?
If they had made the, if they had undertaken the evaluation and made a determination that each of the individual contributing resources rose to that level, then that's correct.
Okay. And in terms of just making, ensuring that a property is preserved, are there other options besides clearing a class one star?
I'm going to call Ken Lyons up to help answer some of these questions.
I'm sorry.
Because he has a lot more expertise in these matters than I do, but I, we certainly have a very robust preservation program and there, Ken can speak to other tools available.
And I'm sorry, the question was, are there other tools available to help with a property's preservation?
Yes.
The city does have another section of the ordinance that allows for historic preservation overlays. It's similar in nature. It does not put the same kind of benefits onto that particular area. There's also things that property owners can do in terms of restrictive historic covenants in which the individual property owners or an HOA in this case could impose restrictive covenants on the title of their properties, which would also limit what could be done to them in the future.
Okay. And this is my last question is, because this is not normal, I mean, not common to see a whole district, but we have had precedent for historic districts before?
Yes, we have a total of eight historic districts in the city right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. I have comments for later.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a follow-up question or two or three. Could you speak to the overlay and what that process would look like? And would that be a separate process that they would pursue if council, you know, makes a determination tonight? What are, what does that process look like?
Well, it's interesting because it's an ordinance section that in my time here with the city for 17 years has never been put in place or used. But it would basically follow a similar process in which the application would go before the city's historic site preservation board, consider the characteristics of it, and make a recommendation to the city council. It's similar to any other overlay that the council has considered, such as the downtown parking ordinance and others.
So it'd be a separate application and process that they would then pursue? It's not something that council could decide tonight based on the evidence in front of us for a historic district designation?
It's a different set of characteristics and findings, yes.
Thank you.
But to follow up on that, sorry, if I may, I, I believe since they have done all of the work with the report that they have, I think if council were to direct us to go back to HSPB and have them consider it through that process, we could work with both the HOA and the HSPB to have them consider that. But as Ken's saying, there's sort of a different set of consideration that we need to make, but we could certainly work with them if that's your wish.
Thank you. And then I just have a question or two about the tribal board. Sorry, I'm not using the right language.
Historic preservation officer?
Historic site preservation officer for the tribe. And I did read the 220 pages attached to this, including the staff report. Do we have, we don't have minutes from that historic site preservation officer with the tribe or do we just get a decision? How does that work? And can you just educate me? Because I'm trying to remember sitting up here for five years, how many times I've seen that on tribal land and how many times we've gone against the tribal historic preservation officer.
Sure. With the ordinance revisions that happened in 2019 and 2020, the ordinance recognized the tribe's sovereign control over tribal lands. So when there is a application that comes to the city on fee land on the reservation, we forward it to the tribal historic preservation officer for comment. And they provide those comments back to us. We got the comments late in this particular case from the tribal preservation officer. It came in between tonight's hearing and the hearing that the HSPB had. And the letter that came in from the tribal preservation officer is in your packet.
Thank you so much. And then if, I'll look for it as we open the public hearing, but if you do have the page number, I will take it. And then can you think, so I love seeing that. Thank you for explaining that, that that's a new process that we set forward. I love seeing that and the deference to tribal sovereignty. So thank you. And so this would be our first example under the new ordinance where we have that opinion from the tribal historic site preservation officer and we might be making a different decision than them?
Well, since the ordinance has gone in place, anytime the planning department receives an application for historic designation that's on the reservation, we always forward it to the tribal preservation officer. In the past, we've not received comments typically from them. We have had one particular application that came in that was actually on allotted land rather than fee simple land, in which case we take that entire application and forward it to the tribal preservation officer and they make the decision in that case. We've had that happen in one, in one instance.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
Just answer her question. It's on page 203.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Andy, go ahead, Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, Ken, in your recollection of those eight, current eight districts, how many of them have we set precedent on the HSPB not evaluating all the structures in the district?
Well, it's interesting because that requirement came in place with those new ordinance revisions. So I am not aware of, and I've got to think through here quickly, but I don't think there is any that we've had come in since the new ordinance in which that additional criteria had to be evaluated.
But I would add to that, that part of the intention behind those revisions was to ensure the integrity of the program. And so we did make those revisions to sort of ensure that what we were considering for designation sort of met a more robust set of criteria than we had been in the past. So, you know, some of that was precipitated by prior decisions, if that makes sense.
Is, is there a feeling or do we know why HSPB didn't evaluate each of the structures individually? Are they operating on prior to 2019 code?
No, we did explain that that was an additional characteristic that they did need to make the findings on. The, to the best of my knowledge, they looked at this as a whole, as a complete district. There's some subtle differences between what happens in the national register criteria and what happens in Palm Springs register. So many people and organizations, including our own, are familiar with the national register. This new criteria, which is put in, put in place in our ordinance revisions just a couple of years ago, is different from what you see with the national register. And although we explained this to the HSPB, they did not feel it was necessary to make those individual reviews, even though our ordinance does require it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. So hearing that to the city attorney or city staff, are we legally able to make this determination? If, you know, is there a liability if all of the factors or criteria haven't been considered under our ordinance?
I, I, I'm not sure there would be a legal liability and I'll look to our city attorney to answer that. I think our concern is more sort of policy and procedural and, and sort of setting precedent, which someone had mentioned earlier, and, and just ensuring that we are following our rules and maintaining the integrity of our program. I think council certainly has a lot of discretion in how they apply the program, but I will at this point look to the attorney.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right, Councilmember Hostage. There's complete discretion on your part to make a decision at this point and it would set precedent, which I think is the concern from city staff.
Thank you. Question for you all. And what is the process for items to be considered in front of the HSPB? Is it just anyone who submits an application?
There's two ways an application can come before the city. They can come from a property owner, in the case of an individual site, or they can come from a group of property owners or even a neighborhood organization when it's a district that's being considered, such as the one before you. The second way that an application can come before the council and the HSPB is if the city initiates it itself. And that has happened in a number of different instances over time. Some were talked about last week, or last time we met. But it's not uncommon for the board through its annual work program to put forward sites and districts that they want to consider for recommendation to you.
Thank you. And so it does not matter if staff recommends that it doesn't, that it meets the criteria or doesn't meet the criteria, it still comes before HSPB if an application has been submitted?
I'm sorry, Mayor, would you?
So no matter what you think, the application still comes before the HSPB?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand the process. I haven't seen, we see a lot of these and usually it's always overwhelming support by all, all sides. So it's unusual to have staff disagree, but HSPB think that it is of significance. And then of course you have the property owners who also agree. Thank you for clarifying that. Do we have any additional questions for staff? No. Seeing none, we will move to our public hearing. So the public hearing is now open and the public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. We do have several people. I'm going to call out a couple of names at a time. So if folks can head up when you start to hear your name, I'd appreciate it. The first speaker is Philip Parks, followed by John Klingemeier.
Hello, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Philip Parks and I've been a, the Villa Roma Board Liaison for the last three years we've been in this process. I've been a resident at Villa Roma for 15 years. And I want to thank the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation, the Historic Site Preservation Board, and particularly Eric Rosenau, Ron and Barbara Marshall, Stephen Vaught, and Stephen Kealan for their unconditional support in all of this and championing, championing this project. I just want to highlight the importance of preserving this type of historic architecture that is Villa Roma for the city of Palm Springs. Villa Roma is a great example of modernist lifestyle garden condominium designed by James Schuler Associates in 1963. Each of the 69 units are built around garden areas so that the residents walk out their doors and into a park-like setting rather than a busy street. The buildings are minimalist in design with low pitched roofs and positioned to let in plenty of sunlight and fresh air while still giving each unit a sense of privacy. And yet, the abiding sense of community is what truly makes Villa Roma unique. We believe Villa Roma is worthy of historic designation. They are not building anything like Villa Roma these days and we hope that the council will help us preserve this piece of mid-century architecture for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, I, I know we had a lot of clapping earlier. If we can keep the clapping to a minimum, I'd appreciate it, just so we can move through it faster. John Klingemeier, followed by Peter Maruzzi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. My name is John Klingemeier and I'm the Villa Roma HOA president. And I've been a resident at Villa Roma for 15 years. We started this historic designation process almost three years ago and our homeowners have been very patient and very supportive of this. We had over 80% of our homeowners vote in favor of applying for this historic designation. That's 56 out of 69 units. So anyone who's ever driven down Avenida Granada in South Palm Springs, I'm sure has, can recognize our complex. It has an impressive Temple of Venus flanked by two of the Roman pillared porticoes, an expansive green area in front of our single level garden style buildings. Our sister community, which is Pompei de los Palmas in North Palm Canyon, has already been honored with Palm Springs Historic District Number Four, and we feel that Villa Roma deserves the same distinction. What does make Villa Roma unique with the architecture is this garden style What does make Villaroma unique with the architecture is this garden-style apartments, or units. It has created an atmosphere that is very community-oriented, very neighborhood. That 1960s neighborhood feeling still exists today in Villaroma. Excuse me, I'm coming over, getting over a cold. There are very few residential communities in today's societies, let's say, that can boast that we have a community like we do at Villaroma. And our residents believe that, and I believe, that it's part of the fabric of the Villaroma. I think, and that is owed in large part to how Villaroma was designed, purposefully designed with the garden home layout, the green spaces, and the Roman theme. We in the community want to acknowledge that design, but more importantly, preserve it, and we ask the city to help approve our historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Maruzzi, followed by Lisa Visino.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, I'm Peter Maruzzi. I can't remember the last time I disagreed with the historic preservation officers' staff recommendations, but I respectfully disagree this time, and here's why. Villaroma does exhibit an exceptional level of historic significance and integrity to qualify for district designation by meeting criteria C and F. Under criterion C, Villaroma's elaborately-themed Roman setting absolutely exemplifies a particular period of local history, which is mid-1960s Palm Springs. Under criterion F, the staff report places too much emphasis on the lack of distinction of the individual buildings and not nearly enough on the overall importance of the property as, quote, "a significant and distinguishable entity." The individual units do exhibit sufficient distinction to complement the extraordinarily significant and extraordinarily rare Roman-themed setting under criterion F. Key character-defining Roman-themed contributing elements of the setting include the enormous Temple of Venus lawn area centered by iconic, by Ionic columns with a circular roof surrounded by a reflecting pool with fountains, something you wouldn't find pretty much anywhere except Palm Springs. Temple ruins at the northeast and southwest Temple of Venus lawn area, original statuary, benches, and planters, original rear-lit plastic Villaroma monument signs facing streets, its clubhouse with zigzag roof supported by Ionic columns. Staff writes, "Its kitschy Roman motif is quirky and unique, but does not exhibit exceptional historic significance." I strongly disagree. Its elaborately-themed setting is very much associated with mid-1960s Palm Springs. In fact, it is one of the two most prominent themed residential environments on such a large -- Really? Wow. Is it two minutes only? Oh, well, glad I got you some hard copies.
Thank you, Peter. Lisa Visino, followed by Ron Marshall.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I am a resident there, and I'm not an expert in this, but you all know our sense of community. And I just want to state that in the last several weeks, we were together in the clubhouse for a Super Bowl party. We were out in the Venus statue area for modernism, waving at the buses going by. And this weekend, they're having the apartments or the houses face each other. They're having a community dog in the little section of grasses. So all of these areas are utilized in different ways because we face one another. And when you walk out your door, you know everybody in the community. I know that you've all, or maybe you've asked about Villaroma, but everybody will say what a wonderful community it is to live in. Going back to the statue, and I'm not an expert in this, but apparently it was vandalized in historic society years ago, did pay half for the, to have it taken care of. So we are a known factor in the community, so please consider our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Marshall, followed by Kyle Gunderson.
Friends, Villaromans, and city council members, I come to praise Villaroma, not to call it unimportant. Good evening. I'm Ron Marshall from the Palm Springs Preservation Foundation. I've had the privilege to write nine historic nominations for the city, including two historic district nominations. So I would ask you to believe me when I say Villaroma absolutely deserves historic designation. But if you don't believe me, please believe famous architectural historian Alan Hess, who has written a letter brilliantly explaining why Villaroma is so important. You'll find the letter buried on page 207 of your staff report. We all know that much of the historic preservation in Palm Springs is for rich people. That makes sense. They own the big, expensive houses we all swoon over. So it's especially rewarding when our historic preservation can be middle-class rather than millionaire-class. And mid-century condominium complexes like Villaroma certainly deserve their day in the Palm Springs sun. While staff has probably spent a few hours at Villaroma, in 2015, my wife and I had the opportunity to rent a unit at Villaroma for three months. We were entranced. I know you've all heard the phrase "sense of place," while Villaroma is drowning in it. In closing, the city's preservation program is, at its heart, an advocacy program. Please advocate for Villaroma and make a little bit of history by creating the city's largest historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Gunderson, followed by Pamela Hannah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Kyle Gunderson. I'm a resident of Villaroma. I want to note that our residents have really come together to work towards improved architectural guidelines, corrections, and repairs. In less than two years, 10% of the units have turned over, and extensive renovations have been made by the new owners as well as existing owners that continue to invest in our complex. Given time, many of the maintenance or compliance issues noted in the report can be addressed and be happy to be addressed by the community, and we would be happy to have your approval to be an iconic and contributing architectural community in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Hannah, followed by, pardon me, I can't read the writing, Steve Vaught.
Hi, I'm Pamela Hannah. I'm a resident at Villaroma, and I had a bunch of notes, and then staff started talking, and I scratched it up. So I just want to sort of concise my comments to this. We're, we at Villaroma are very passionate, and we feel we are a very important part of the fabric, the historic fabric of Palm Springs. And our architect, in modernist architecture, the intent is to create a leisure lifestyle, living independently, but, but also providing your residents a way to gather. We today, 60-some years later, are living in the intent that our architect intended so many years ago. We gather several times a year, and we're very proud of our architecture, and it brings us together. And what we have is very unique, and we're asking tonight for your help. We want you to help guide us in how we protect this historic gem. What's the process for moving forward? We feel we're in a little bit of a battle with staff, and we have great support from the committee. Help us preserve this great gem. How do we do that? And it's really poignant, I think, for us to come before you during Modernism Week because, as Lisa said, every day tour buses go by on Avenida Granada, and they take a few minutes to look at us, and they get, they get what part of a unique historic Palm Springs history we are. They get it. Why doesn't everybody else? So thank you for your time, and please consider us and, as in our importance, and thank you for your time. We appreciate all the time of all you staff and members. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Vaught.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council. I'm Steve Vaught, and I am the one who was lucky enough to write the report, the nomination for the Villaroma. So I guess you can already guess what my stand is on it. I don't normally read speeches, but I want to stay on point and on time tonight. So let me begin. I am here to support Villaroma's nomination in the strongest possible way I can. I'm going to try to focus, because my time is so limited, on one particular aspect of this debate. It seems to me that the Villaroma's greatest asset is its Rome-meets-mid-century hybrid, and that is also what's causing some to dismiss it. As historic preservationists, we, of course, are always looking to the past, but we must also look to the future. Some of our most treasured architectural assets were once underappreciated or unappreciated by previous generations who failed to see that they had architectural merit. Unfortunately, so many have fallen to the wrecking ball as a result. We have to be constantly on guard to avoid missing an opportunity we may later regret when it comes to evaluating something that does not neatly fit in to preconceived perceptions of what deserves preservation and what does not. Sometimes it takes time. Sometimes it takes decades, even centuries, for certain types of architecture to be seen clearly for what it is. That's why the National Trust for Historic Preservation has begun looking ahead, addressing this very issue at a future landmarks. More modern structures that may not, may not be important today in their minds, but one day will be historic. In Palm Springs, we should do the same, keeping one eye on the past and the other on the future. Some roadside architecture, motels, diners, and apartments may not be taken seriously because they are built with pseudo-classic or exotic themes, but these are already finding a growing appreciation from a new generation who love them for their retro charm and vintage feeling they evoke. Those of us of a certain age have lifelong memories of road trips across the country dining at heroic Greek diners, road trips staying in places like the Safari Inn or Aztec Motor Lodge. Oops, I'm over time, too. I'm so sorry. Thank you. Please support Villaroma. It is a fantastic and unique piece of Palm Springs architectural history.
Thank you. We do have some callers on the phone. Ash Letto.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and the council, for allowing me the opportunity to voice my support. My wife Jasmine and I are recent transplants to Palm Springs, and we are both architects. And one of the reasons we bought in Villaroma was because of this mid-century presence. And it is timely that it is Modernism Week as busloads of tourists and bike tourists go past our property. And I think it's important that Tom Mayne, the architect from LA, gave a keynote lecture for, as part of Modernism Week, that basically explains mid-century modernism in the Palm Springs sense is crucial to the development of LA itself, that these two should be seen synonymous, and Palm Springs is not just an afterthought. We were the vanguard in the 1960s, especially with Villaroma being the first, one of the first condominium complexes in the country. So it is in this language of access to real estate, access to the promise of modernism for the middle class, not only now, but, but back then as well. And it is in the spirit of Hollywood Regency, which is sometimes often derided as kitsch. I don't think it's any less kitsch than the Royal Hawaiian, which also has historic designation. Just because it wasn't a named architect or a developer does not mean it's any less relevant. I think we need to be mindful of the opportunity we have here. And I think it's important as well that we, as a group of people, see preservation as advocacy and not just a static approach to fixing the world as the singular image. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Gaffney Howe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I am the community manager for Villaroma, with my firm having managed the community for 12 years. I am here to show my support for the community in achieving their historic designation status. Not only do I believe the association meets the criteria for designation, but I believe based on firsthand interaction with the membership that the association will proudly and properly maintain the designation for its intended purpose as a benefit to the city. Over the years, I have met with hundreds of contractors and other professionals at Villaroma. Most mentioned how impressed they were with the unique architectural components, with many under the impression that the association already was a historic district. The association has been approached for photo shoots with Esquire UK and French magazine Madame Figaro as their photographer believed Villaroma to be a beautiful representation of Palm Springs. This was very flattering, especially coming from halfway across the globe. The only reason I can think that one may not wish to grant the designation is because an abundance of historic sites may imply it is not as prestigious a designation. However, if a school has numerous Dean's List recipients, it speaks highly of and adds interest to the school. It does not downplay others' achievements each time the award is earned and granted. Villaroma has a wonderful story to tell, and I hope that you'll strongly consider approving the historic designation application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Sharon Segal.
Hi, I am Dr. Sharon Segal. And Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, I wish you'd come over here and take a walk. Our place is absolutely lovely, and the structures are varied. They are absolutely mid-century modern, and it's such a refreshing place to live. It's not tenement style. The condos are not squished up against each other the way we see so much of the building now going on. We take a great deal of pride in our environment and the historical significance. I could have bought a condo or a home anywhere I wanted in Palm Springs. And when I first bought in 2008, it was called Garden Apartments, but there, every path was just in bloom with enormous and beautiful shrubs and flowers. And then we went to Desert Scape, so we can't really claim the petunias and the puppies, but we have more than met our goals in the careful use of water. So yes, we are garden apartments, and we are very definitely mid-century modern. The reason I bought here was because it was so different than all of the other condo complexes I saw. And I hope with all my heart that you will come over and see what we mean by the appropriateness of historic district designation. I enthusiastically, enthusiastically recommend your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, are there any other comments that came in?
We have no other public commenters.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Do we have additional questions or discussion from council?
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I have a question for staff, and thank you so much for everyone who participated in this. It's great to see everyone's love of Palm Springs and our unique design, and to have so many esteemed preservationists and so many more in the room. So I appreciate your input and love of our community. I just have a question for staff. I hear staff's concern that HSPB didn't follow the proper procedure and process under our ordinance for historic designation of a district, and obviously want to follow our ordinance. That's why we wrote it that way. And so if, what, what are the options for council tonight in terms of sending it back to HSPB to make that analysis and bring it back to council? I assume council could also make the findings tonight and then send a message to HSPB that we'd like them to follow the ordinance and really consider all the considerations, you know, can you, so can you just lay out for us as we make a motion here or consider one? What are the, all the alternatives for us to pursue?
Sure, yeah. I, I think that you have a bit of latitude here in what you elect to do. So option one is obviously, you know, approve as recommended by the HSPB. Option two would be, could be to sort of, you know, continue it and send it back to the HSPB for additional consideration under the ordinance and to undertake the evaluation of the individual resources and return to you with sort of updated findings based on that evaluation. And then option three is to deny and perhaps recommend that they come back and work with staff and the HSPB on alternate forms of ensuring the preservation of the site through one of the ways that Ken suggested earlier. I'd see those as the three main options.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Protem? Oh, pardon me, Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, thank you. This is a comment. I've actually been on Villaroma, not a lot of times, but a number of times. It is in my district, and it's an incredibly lovely location, and the homeowners there are frequently of more modest means. And I think the historic And I think the historic designation is something that we should move forward with. I am open to sending it back to HSPB to make sure that we have followed all of the appropriate procedures, but ultimately, I'm supportive of these homeowners.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just, I do want to say that on a general sense, I absolutely agree with the importance of preserving our historic architecture. And if anyone has been anywhere in Palm Springs in the last few days and over the next week, you'll see just how important that is to our entire city and our, and our economy, and our, most importantly, to our residents. And I have been to Villaroma, and it is, and it is a very unusual place and very, something very special in Palm Springs. I've read the book that it was featured in, and I, I have to say, I did not know just how tight a community it was until this came up, and I think that is something that is truly special in Palm Springs. And regardless of whether people think it's kitschy or whatever the style is, I, I don't, I think that's subjective, and I think it is certainly historically significant. And I do think that this should be a Class I Historic Designation. That said, I find it very difficult to go against the rules of the ordinance, and my direction would be if you can follow the rules that have the review of the individual contributing factors and go through it, and it was, follow the ordinance, I would be very much in supportive of this getting the designation. And that, that's, it's a bit of a struggle for me because I very much would want to just say yes right away, but without following the ordinance that the city has determined, I don't feel that I can do that in good conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments? Do we have a motion?
Councilmember Middleton, was that a motion that you made in your comment?
That was a motion. I do take Mayor Protem Bernstein's comments to heart, that perhaps forwarding this back to HSPB with a strong recommendation from council that we want to see historic designation.
Yeah, I will second that motion.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. And just to discuss, I'm also, I support designation, and I really appreciate the comments about allowing preservation for all and all income levels, and I think that's really important. And I did, I did note when I saw the word kitschy in a staff report, which I'm sure nothing was meant by it, but there were also comments about the construction, and we just want to make sure that preservation is not just for the elite and, you know, multimillion-dollar homes, but is for everyone. So I'm strongly in support of that, and so I am open to making alternative motion to approve as a recommended finding that it meets criteria in C and F, as Peter Maruzzi and many others stated, with a strong admonition to HSPB that in the future, we need to follow the ordinance or we won't approve them. That was sort of my question to staff, is do you want to go through that staff process and have staff time to kick it back to HSPB to make those findings, or would you prefer, if council does support, to just approve as is? Because I'm happy to make an alternative motion just to approve.
As going in, I think it sounds like there's a lot of support for the designation. I would say staff's preliminary evaluation is that we do not believe from our evaluation that they would be able to make the finding on the individual contributing resources. So we would likely return to you with similar comments from staff and a similar recommendation from HSPB.
Thank you. So I'll make an alternative motive, motion to approve as received, unless that's a friendly amendment. And Councilmember Middleton, you want to make, change your motion since it's your district?
I accept the friendly amendment.
Great, so a motion and a second. Madam Mayor.
All right. No, not a problem. Do we, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember DeHart?
No.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Sorry, I'm really torn on this one. No.
Motion passes three, two.
Congratulations. All right. We are moving on to the next item, which is Item 2B, a public hearing for a request for extension of time for a tentative tract map approval associated with the construction of a six-story, 73,300-square-foot mixed-use building with 45 for-sale residential units and ground-floor commercial located on Block B of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan at 200 North Bellardo Road, Zone CBD.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do need to recuse myself as I have a business that is located within 500 feet of the property, and the city attorney has advised me to recuse.
Thank you very much. And as we, let's just wait for the noise to die down. Can we now have a staff report on the item, please?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The matter before you is for the development of Block B of our downtown, within the downtown Palm Springs specific plan. It involves one of the two entitlements for the project. It is the subdivision component of the development project. The major architectural application was originally approved, as well as the subdivision map for the project back in January of '21. And it does involve 73,000-square-foot commercial and residential building. The residential component is 45 condominium units, and so that was the reason for the subdivision map, was to create a one-lot subdivision for condominium purposes. The entitlement was effective after the Architectural Review Committee approved the, some components of the project that were conditioned back in January of '21 relative to activating the frontage of the project. So the applicant has submitted a request to extend the entitlements by one year, so that would, the entitlements are valid for two years. The extension would, if granted, would extend the subdivision map an additional year through May of 2024. So this is the map on your screen here. It's gotten hard to see, but it is included as an attachment to your staff report. Just for background purposes, this is the building that was approved back in January of '21, and this just shows a rendering of the proposed building from the southwest vantage point looking to the northeast, so standing near the intersection of Bellardo Road and Museum Way. This is another rendering of the project from Bellardo Road, further north along Bellardo Road looking to the southeast. So the matter before you, again, is an extension of the subdivision map. The Planning Commission, back on January 25th of this year, approved the major architectural extension for an additional year. They also recommended approval of the time extension map, or the time extension for the subdivision map to the city council. The seven criteria that were evaluated are shown here on the screen. And in response to the first item, the general plan and specific plan designate the site as central business district. The project remains consistent with these plans, so there is really no issue there. In terms of the second item, appropriateness and validity of the original findings, the project still comprises of 45 for-sale condominiums with ground-floor retail. Although there were minor changes that were reviewed and evaluated by the Architectural Review Committee, the project layout, design, and overall scope remain the same. In terms of item number three, environmental changes in the site's surrounding, again, there were some further details that were refined and reviewed by the ARC. And the only other environmental changes that have happened around the site are the completion of the downtown park. Thus, there have been no real significant changes to the site or the environment since the original approval. In terms of item number four, conformist to the property maintenance standards, staff did verify that there have been no code compliance on this property in the past two years, and the site has been maintained. In terms of item number five, demonstrate convincingly and clearly that the project will be substantially underway within the period requested. The applicant has made significant progress on completing the building permit and subdivision final map process with both our building and engineering departments, so they have made substantial progress in that regard. Item number six, reasonable, substantial, and timely efforts, kind of similar to the previous item. They did submit building permits back in November of '21, and they've had two revisions since that time. Our engineering department has also received their final map and has been in process with that and has had two revisions or two reviews as well. Finally, the last one, which is usually the most difficult one to make relative to the seven criteria extenuating circumstances that are not within the applicant's control, as described in the applicant's letter, there has been some issue with regards to the Department of Industrial Relations and the proposed project. And given that this is a public-private partnership, there is a unique circumstance here with this potential complaint that has been, or with this complaint that has been filed with the Department of Industrial Relations. And so the applicant has been making progress towards resolving that matter, but again, that has been beyond the applicant's control in terms of making sure the project financing is all completed and ready to go. They also cite the issue of the pandemic obviously causing delays with the project. So that is staff's, that completes staff's presentation. Again, this item was presented to the Planning Commission in January. They did recommend approval as outlined in the findings in your staff report and draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, thank you. My understanding is we're here on this issue solely because of the issues that need to get resolved at DIR, and there's nothing else that's new here that we are dealing with. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff? No. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this matter for up to two minutes, and I do not believe that we have any speakers. Is that correct?
No speakers.
All right, well, if we have no speakers and the public hearing is now closed, is there any discussion or additional questions from council?
I second the motion, and I just want to disclose, I called the applicant and asked about the graffiti park and the status of the project, and thank you to the applicant or the, yeah, the applicant for putting something in the, in place as we wait for this project. I think it's a great addition to the community and appreciate that, since so many projects do not have that. And so just want to disclose that, but fully support moving forward with this project, and I can't wait for it to get shovels in ground and get it going.
Thank you. So we do have a motion from Councilmember DeHart and a second from Councilmember Holstich. Before we do the roll call, I will just say there was this unforeseen delay, and if it were not for that, this project would have already moved forward. And the staff report does, did indicate that this would be moving forward by the end of summer, and which is part of why I also will support allowing for this extension. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Thank you. The, actually, can we get Mayor Protem back while I read the title? The next item is Item 2C, a public hearing under Section 53083 of the California Government Code to approve a hotel operations covenant between the City of Palm Springs and Bell Lofts LLC, a California limited company pursuant to the city's hotel operations incentive program. And while we wait for Mayor Protem Bernstein to get back, I will say that after this item is finished, we will take a 10-minute break. Oh, no, did he go too far? Well, we need to have a full, we need to have a staff report for this public hearing. Oh, here he comes. All right. Jay, it's over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. This proposed action is to hold a public hearing to consider a hotel operations covenant agreement with Bell Lofts LLC, the owner of Descanso Resort. The owners have applied under the Phase Two Hotel Renovation Program to enter into the operations covenant to help finance renovations at the Descanso Resort located at 288 East Camino Monte Vista, which is south of East Vistachino and north of East Tatchiva Drive. The Descanso Resort is a 15-room hotel. Under the program, the owner would benefit by receiving 50% of the net new transit occupancy tax, or TOT, which is estimated to be $58,800 annually, or $588,000 over the 10-year program period. The city is projected to receive net new transient occupancy tax of approximately $51,300 or $513,000 over the 10-year period. After the initial 10-year period, the city would receive 100% of the TOT, which is estimated to be $157,000 annually. The improvements include new carpeting, new reception area, furniture, lobby desk, new patio furniture, signage, Wi-Fi equipment, an EV car charging station, and window treatments, as well as wall treatments and beds. The total project expenditures were $640,000, which is the maximum amount Bell Lofts LLC would be entitled to receive through the program. There are certain financial controls in the program, one of them being a 3% increase to the base. Interesting to describe, the program works by splitting, taking 50% of the new TOT over a certain base of what they were already producing, so the city does not lose the amount of what they were already producing. Well, that base increases annually at the CPI or 3%, whichever is greater, so that there is not an artificial gap being created. It tracks with inflation. The TOT sharing ends after 10 years, and the amount that the hotel owner can receive is capped at the amount of their investment, so that's $640,000. And staff would recommend approval of the hotel operations incentive agreement with Bell Lofts LLC, and is available to answer any questions you may have. And there's a public hearing.
Thank you. Do council members have any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak for up to two minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
We have no public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion or questions from council members on this item? Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, I fully support this recommendation from staff going forward, and I think this is exactly the type of support that the city can continue to provide to help our small business community continue to thrive in town. So I fully support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments, or is there a motion? Mayor Protem?
I move to approve.
Second by Councilmember DeHart. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. At this time, we will take a break. We'll come back at no later than 7:25, because we do have a lot of robust items after this. So take. We'll come back at no later than 7:25 because we do have a lot of robust items after this. So take your break now. Are going to return to open session. And the next item on the agenda is item 3A, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs terminating the local COVID-19 emergency effective February 8, 2023, and direction regarding third-party food delivery fees and teleconferencing. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, members of the council. Before you, this item is to, is whether to terminate the local COVID-19 emergency that was declared by the council on March 14 of 2020. The primary effect of the declared emergency was twofold. The first was to provide the city with the ability to issue emergency orders. The second was to make it possible for the city to receive certain state and federal funding related to COVID-19. The city manager terminated all emergency orders with one exception that I'll get to later. And state and federal funding are no longer present as it pertains to COVID-19 funding. As such, council or as such, city staff and the city attorney's office recommends ending the local emergency on February 28, which is later this month. That date coincides with the end of the state of emergency by Governor Newsom on the state level. The one emergency ordinance that was codified relates to food delivery fees. These regulations are tied to the local state of emergency. So in the event that you decide to end the local state of emergency, there is a sunset clause, the food regulations, the food delivery fee regulations will end 90 days from the end of the local emergency. So that's why these two are kind of tied together for you on this report. So as it stands now, there are prohibitions in place at three different levels when it comes to food delivery fees. The first is that food delivery fees cannot charge, these apps that provide for food delivery, they cannot charge more than the menu items at the restaurant. The second regulation is that food delivery fees are capped at 15% of the food purchase. And the third regulation is that there are fees that are capped at 5% and that's what can be charged to the restaurant. So for example, if there's a burger that's $10 and somebody uses the app, the food delivery fee cannot be more, the burger has to be $10 if that's what it is at the restaurant. It has to be charged 10 through the app. The food delivery fee would be capped at $1.50, right, which is 15% of the order. And then the other regulation is that they couldn't charge the restaurant more than 5% or 50 cents for that $10 burger. And lastly, there's the item before you is, relates to teleconferencing. As I'm sure you're well, well aware, AB 361 is what we have been approving on a regular basis to provide teleconferencing opportunities for council to attend remotely. There are two findings related to AB 361 that must be found every 30 days. And those are that state or local officials continue to impose or recommend measures to promote social distancing. And that the legislative body, you, have made a determination that the findings are required for at least a continuance of another 30 days. And we can touch more on exactly what those findings are. The second option is to enact a more recent state measure. It's AB 2449. It's a little more restrictive than AB 361. It does allow for remote participation or teleconferencing under two exceptions. The first is for just cause and the second is, are for emergency circumstances. And those are defined in the bill. For just cause, you can attend remotely under the following, and I can read them for you. It's whether childcare or child giving, or whether childcare or caregiving needs for a child parent, grandparent, sibling, spouse, or domestic partner requires that remote participation. Whether you have a contagious illness that prevents in-person attendance. Whether you have a physical or mental disability need that requires remote participation. Or whether you're traveling on official business to another state or, to another state or local agency. So those are the exceptions for a request to be made under AB 2449 for just cause. If you make that request under AB 2449 for just cause, there doesn't need to be action by the council. You can make that request and you can, and you can attend remotely. However, that's limited to two times per calendar year. The second option, if you decide to move forward with remote participation under AB 2449, is to attend remotely when there's an emergency circumstance. And that is defined under, under the law, under the bill as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents in-person attendance. Under the emergency circumstance exception, there need, there must be a vote by the body to approve that member from attending remotely or for attending remotely. And there must, and there must be a general description of the circumstances by that absent member supporting the request for remote participation. Under the emergency circumstance justification, the limit there is 20% of meetings or no more than three consecutive months of using that justification. However, for each, each public meeting, that request will need to be made and a determination by the body would need to be made upon that request. And then lastly, the option is to not move forward with, under either bill and to revert back to the original requirements of the Brown Act, which generally requires in-person participation. To the extent you're going to attend remotely, you would have to make sure that that, that location is posted on the agenda and made available to the public to attend.
Thank you. I'd actually like to start us off on this one. Can you just, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. Can you clarify with AB 2449, there's, you're allowed to have missed two meetings in a year, well, missed two in-person meetings in a year and appear via video. And with AB 361, is it that you can appear as many times via video as you want, as long as you allow the public into that space?
Yeah, so there are, so under AB 361, it is a more lax, for lack of a better way, of allowing remote participation. And that is what we've been doing for over a year now. And we do have to make findings every 30 days to continue allowing remote participation under AB 361. And let me pull the language so you have it.
Just a second, Ryan.
Sure.
So, so AB 361 is what requires us to make findings every 30 days that we're still under a state of emergency?
Well, it's, so the language is a little imprecise. The findings are that there is a state of emergency that remains or that state or local officials continue to recommend measures promoting social distancing. So you could continue to make a finding under AB 361 that there are continued recommendations on the state and local level for social distancing. And obviously, this is language that was drafted prior to even recommendations about vaccinations and mask wearing. So the, the terms are a little outdated. But under AB 361, which was codified into the government code, you can make findings with either a state of emergency or if you find that state or local officials continue to recommend measures to promote social distancing.
And then the regular Brown Act that before any pandemic occurred, under those rules, is there a certain number of times that you're allowed to appear telephonically?
So there weren't any exceptions like this to appear telephonically other than making sure that the location that you were at attending telephonically was posted on the agenda. And that location where you were appearing telephonically was made available to the public. So you would have to post that and make that available to, so if you're at your home, you would have to make your home available to the public.
Right. But could you do it as many times as you wanted?
There is no restriction. Yes, you can, you could do that. There's no limitation there.
And then with AB 2449, you don't have to let the public in, but you can only do it twice?
Well, so AB 2449 has two ways to justify remote participation. One is under just cause and one is under emergency circumstances. If you're to use the just cause justification, you can only use that twice in a calendar year. If you use the emergency circumstances, that limit is no more than 20% of meetings or three consecutive months. So there's a lot more opportunity to use the emergency circumstances justification to appear remotely. That being said, there's different criteria for it and board action would be taken to approve that remote participation. So in theory, you could make the request to appear remotely under the emergency circumstance exception of AB 2449. And the governing body could not vote in favor of that participation remotely. In which case, the elected official would not be allowed to participate in that meeting.
And that, and 20% of those, and you can only do it 20% of the meetings? And if you had already missed two due to just cause?
That's right. And so then it would revert. And so then it would revert back to the Brown Act requirements. So you could, in theory, attend remotely beyond those limitations, but you would have to, again, post the location of where you're attending remotely and make that location available to the public.
Great, thank you. All right. Council members, I know there's, there's a lot on the table here, but just to, to clarify, so we are being asked to terminate local COVID emergency orders. The second item is to address the food delivery ordinance, and then the third is which teleconferencing item we want, which is what I was just asking questions about. Can we go ahead and address number one first, council, regarding terminating the local COVID emergency? Councilmember Hostage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to address all if I can quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then I'll hear from council what you all think. Would love to deliberate together. But one, I'd like to see us remove the COVID emergency order as the governor is doing. I think that makes sense to be consistent. I just would want to make sure that we've applied for all funds, state and federal, that are possibly available to us. It sounds like we have done so, and that work is completed. So making sure that's completed, I support that. I very much would like to see us at least move forward with the third-party food delivery fees. I'd love to hear from Mayor Protem Bernstein and restaurants and get more input. I don't know how well it's being administered and enforced. I was just calculating my Postmates delivery fees, and it looks like it's well beyond the 15% allowed by our ordinance. So a little concerned about how it's working in implementation, but would love to see us continue that beyond the sunset date. And then third, which I think is harder, is the teleconferencing. I very much have significant concerns about AB 2499 and the way, 2449, the way that it's written, especially for people who might need medical leave, might be pregnant, might need caretaking responsibilities. It just really places a high burden on those of us who might need to zoom in from meetings because it does limit to two for just cause, and then you're going to, council to ask for permission in emergencies, and then still that's limited. So I have had significant conversations with the city attorney to understand if, how the ADA, Americans with Disability Act, might apply to 2449, how like a pregnancy leave or needing accommodations might apply. I mean, it sounds like it's complicated, and there's no good answer, unless you have a better answer than that for the record now. But anyway, so I'm open to considering either keeping how we're doing it now with AB 361, if we can meet those findings, because it just seems a better fit for our community, especially when people are so concerned about COVID and keeping each other safe during these times and being able to remotely participate if we're sick and not having that be limited. But if we need to move forward in, you know, AB 2449, just making sure that we, you know, are accommodating folks who need it, but we're not allowed to change 2449. It sets the floor for what we're allowed. We can't be less restrictive. We can only be more restrictive. So that's all to say, I think we should rescind the emergency, extend the rules for restaurant delivery, and then move forward with the telephone conferencing with everyone's input.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so just, I guess I should ask this question. So with AB 361 continues through January 2024, so are we deciding to adopt AB 2449 now or in January 24?
That, that's a decision before you. You can certainly make the decision now to move forward under 2449, which is a bit more restrictive. You can continue, and that's a good point, Mayor Protem, you can continue under AB 361 up until January of next year, where that's, where it would no longer be an option. To continue under AB 361 into January of 2024, you would be required every 30 days to make those findings that we've, that we've made in the past. And that is that, you know, one, you're, you're reconsidering the circumstances of the state of emergency, and two, that there's no, there's no longer a state of emergency. So two would be that state or local officials continue to impose or recommend social distancing.
Okay, so.
And this hasn't been tested in a court of law, as far as I'm aware. So the language is a little, is a little fuzzy. I think it's justifiable to continue under AB 361. I know of some public agencies that have decided to make that decision and move forward under AB 361. Others have decided to adopt AB 2449.
Okay, so it seems to me AB 240, 2449 does pose some potential issues that, that Councilmember Hostage brought up. And I would, my, my thinking is that we get, we vote to terminate the emergency order, that we continue 361 through this year, we'll have better feedback as to what happens with other communities, and then go to 2449. And I just want to say I would vote to continue the third party, or create a new ordinance, whatever we need to do to keep the third-party food delivery restrictions. I think, in my view, I think the pandemic may have brought to light certain problems that have existed otherwise, and, and the issue may not just be because of a pandemic or because people are, could be people have childcare or people have disabilities and so, or immune, are still immune compromised in that, you know, that, that it's, that the gouging is something that we still do want to control to whatever extent, you know, whatever extent we can. So I would have voted to, I don't know whether we have to do a new ordinance or just extend that, but I would have voted to keep that if one comes up.
Thank you. Other comments? I, I agree with the council members. In terms of AB 361, though, I do want to clarify that if we continue on that path, I would like to see council attending meetings in person as much as possible. I certainly don't want us to abuse this in terms of just wanting to go somewhere and wanting to zoom in instead. I'd like us to try to get on the path towards AB 2449, if that's what we're going to have to do, just so that we can kind of get used to this transition, transition. Obviously, there are questions that Councilmember Hostage raised on, should we have more options? And I think that that is a good, important discussion that we should be having with, with the state on what should be done. But I also don't want us to be blindsided once we do have to implement this. So just to be mindful for everyone to really consider when you're using AB 361 to miss a meeting and, because I know that it has been difficult as we're, we're figuring all of this out. But clearly, it is very helpful as we see Councilmember Middleton on, on Zoom right now. Councilmember Middleton, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I'm, I'm at home tonight because I don't want to infect anyone else with the cold that I've come down with. How are, how are situations like this going to be handled in the future, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, council members. So under AB 2449, there would be an exception, especially when you're, when you're sick. That is one of the exceptions under 2449. So both under AB 361 as well as under AB 2449, Councilmember Middleton would be allowed to appear remotely. And, and AB 2449, I think, will sunset a couple of years down the line, and I got to get that date for you, but it's certainly after the sunset of AB 361, which is January of 2024.
I think that's important. I agree with the mayor. We all want to be present in person. But one of the new normals that we are dealing with today is there are so many contagions out there that when you are potentially contagious to others, you need to restrict your movements.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree that since we don't have to address really the more AB 2449, we have until January 1. Let, I think, let AB 361 run its course, see what happens with AB 2449 throughout the year, but let's operate under AB 361. And I think the third-party delivery fees. I too question the enforcement. You know, several times we have used the service, and it definitely was not applicable. So I like the idea and the intent behind it, but I, I would like to put a timeline that we address it again, and between now and, and that end date, that we really look to see, how is there any enforcement put in place here? But I would say maybe through the end of the year, we address it again to make sure that it's doing what we intended it to do, and certainly adopt the resolution terminating the local emergency.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
With the boards and commissions, are they all meeting in person now? Or there's some that are just all doing it remote?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure how all the boards and commissions are doing it, but you do set the ability for boards and commissions to either follow suit and work under AB 361. You could also make a recommendation that they revert back to the Brown Act requirements predating 361, or you, as the council, can make a recommendation that all boards and commissions attend via the newest one, which is AB 2449.
Well, I would, I would just point out, I think the idea of meeting in person matters is important, and I think it's also important for boards and commissions and for the public. And so to the extent that all the meetings could be a de facto in person and allowing for, you know, teleconferencing if somebody is, is ill or emergency under 361 or whatever, or, and then later 2449 would make sense to me.
And, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, we did allow the committees, commissions, and boards with your approval to go ahead and go to in-person and hybrid. So we do now, we've been trying to get the technology so that they could do hybrid meetings also.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to terminate the emergency ordinance, to allow us to consider extending the food delivery ordinance, and then to continue under AB 361 until January with a request to the city attorney that you please keep us updated on AB 361 in terms of how this, this, the findings are, if there are any lawsuits again regarding the findings, because I don't want us to be blindsided if other cities are being forced to revert to AB 2449. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second that motion and just also ask, I don't think it needs to be included in the motion. It sounds like from my conversations with the city attorney that there are other assembly bills and senate bills moving forward that might more adequately address teleconferencing and the way to do it, in a way to accommodate the public and, and council members. And so I'd love to know if there are opportunities for advocacy for the council, because I don't think 2449 gets it perfectly right for our community. Thank you.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Is there a sunset?
Yes, there is. So the reason that we have to vote on the food delivery fees is because it'll sunset after 90 days.
But indefinitely?
We'll need to continue it before the 90 days.
But indefinitely?
So.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so we'll have to bring an ordinance back to you. Where we'll set out the, it sounds like it's going to be a continuance of the current regulations that are in place. And we can certainly have a discussion now on whether or not we want that ordinance that we're bringing back to have a sunset clause, which I think is what Councilmember DeHart is getting at. Do we want to put a timeline, as we did with the current ordinance, which was 90 days beyond the termination of a local emergency? Do we want to have a timeline put in place on the ordinance that we're bringing back? I understand council wants, it sounds like they want it continued, but indefinitely? Or do we want to put an end date on that?
I see. So my motion would be for it to be there indefinitely because of the concern regarding folks with disabilities or just other needs, and, and also not wanting to price gouge restaurants and our local businesses. Okay, great. All right, so we do have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't call you mayor, city clerk.
No, thank you. Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yep.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item 3B, Community Development Block Grant, 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan and Budget Discussion. May we have a staff report, please, Mr. Verata?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. The city of Palm Springs has a fairly modest community development block grant program, and over the past years, the city council has elected to utilize the majority of the CDBG funds for public facility and infrastructure projects. So it's, it's that time of year again where we discuss how to use a community development block grant programs next fiscal year. And as part of that process, we want to get some input from the city council, ideas, and let you know that we'll be bringing back a work program at a future, at a future public hearing, and a second public hearing to approve that work plan. So there's a review process with the public to take a look at the work program that's come up, and that's a 30-day review. So we will go through that in future meetings. For the time being, though, we are estimating that the allocation of community development block grant funds will be $425,000, which is the amount we receive this year. If it's more or less, we'll find out when HUD provides an actual letter to us for the allocations. But based on that amount, 20% of the allocation would go towards administration costs, and that's $85,000. Public services are limited to 15% of the CDBG allocation. So that would limit that to $63,750. The public facilities and rehabilitation category would be approximately $276,000 of the $425,000 allocation. Now, we anticipate not using the entire amount for the public service, and so an additional $13,750 would go towards the public facility and residential rehab programs that, that we could apply the funds for, towards. And, you know, we've heard it over the past few years about creating a more robust residential rehabilitation program. We currently have a residential rehabilitation program that's capped at $1,500, and that's just for minor repairs to existing facilities like air conditioning units and heaters and swamp coolers and some plumbing. But what we're proposing here is increasing that to approximately $20,000, depending on need, and that would cover items such as code violations, more major electrical, plumbing, roofing, health and safety issues, access issues, asbestos and lead abatement, and some exterior improvements, again, to comply with code, code requirements. And as we envision this one residential rehab program, the eligible homes would be owner-occupied. Requests would be inspected and approved by our department, and the approved work would be put out to bid and awarded to licensed contractors. And applicants would be considered on a first-come, first-served basis when, when, until the funds are depleted. And with the amount of funding, we anticipate the $276,000, that would serve approximately 14 households at $20,000 each, if that were the amount. Another possible use for the CDBG funds would be to apply them to the navigation center. Now, as you know, the navigation center has, is. Now, as you know, the navigation center has, is quite a bit more expensive, and $290,000 may not go that far, particularly given the administrative burden that comes along with CDBG funds. So it's a possibility, if necessary, but not necessarily the most optimal use of the CDBG funds. And just to give you just some background on this, recent allocations of CDBG funds have gone to shade structures for, at Demuth Park and Baristo Park, and the year before that for bathrooms and air conditioning systems at Demuth Park. So again, we'll be coming back with a work program for your consideration, but at this time, if you'd like to weigh in on any of those programs, see them modified in any way, have us pursue other types of programs with the community development block grant funds, you know, we'd like to hear that. Keep in mind, these would have to go towards some type of a facility. And in the past, as I've mentioned, shade structures, restrooms, sidewalks have been done in the past. So projects like that have been part of the CDBG work program. You know, I'd also like to touch on the map that we used in the staff report. It does appear that based on 2020 census data, that other areas of the city, in particular the Desert Highlands Gateway Community, which still includes Mountain Gate and Merrillon, would fall into a low-income area, low and moderate income area, based on the, based on the incomes of the 2020 census. However, we're waiting to hear back from HUD on what map they recognize for eligibility in the program. So if it turns out they say, yes, that's also an allowable area, then I think we'd put on the table improvements to James O'Jesse Park as another possibility. Although, you know, we wouldn't want to do that too late in the game, and we'd also want to do that in coordination with any Measure J projects being conducted there, too. So that is a potential development there.
Jay, do you know when we would hear back from HUD about that?
We're, I don't know exactly, but we plan to come back with a work program in March, so, second meeting in March. So hopefully before then, we'd be able to build that in and have that discussion at that time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Does council have any questions or comments? Councilmember DeHart?
Jay, so the question on the map is, the map that we're looking at, that's not a census tract map identifying the income areas?
Oh, that is, that is. It's just that new census tracts may be formed, and what that census tract map shows are the eligible low-income, low-moderate income areas. Those change over time as incomes go up and down, so.
So is, aren't we, aren't the Desert Highlands, isn't that included in the current census tract map? Or that's not?
Current, it is in the current census tract map, but in the prior census, I think it was 2010, it was not considered a low-moderate income area. It included Merrillon, I'm sorry, it included Mountain Gate and Desert Highlands. And so the combined incomes had them under the 50% threshold of being low-moderate income households.
Okay.
Right, so in the, in the last three years, for instance, we have not been able to use CDBG funds for that community center or that park because it did not qualify.
Specifically for the infrastructure. It can be used, the navigation center's in that census tract, but it would qualify because the clientele for the navigation center would all be low-income. And as being proposed with the residential rehab program, that would be citywide. It would go towards qualified low-income residents.
Thank you. I, you know, we do have other studies that show childhood poverty in that area, and so I'm just curious what we can do to actually be able to use funds for that community center and park. And we only have two community centers, and we've used a lot of CDBG funds for the Demuth Community Center because we were allowed to, and we're not, we haven't been able to use it for this park. And I, it just seems to be such a disservice, especially when we do know that most of our children live in the northern part of our city.
Yes, agreed. The other information I've seen shows this area would qualify. The question is, is HUD recognizing this now, or do they take it in a, you know, big group nationwide as to which year they base their data on? We don't know, but hopefully within the next week or two, we would have an answer. And I would really expect it to be a part of the low mod income census tracts.
Thank you. And just for the public and for council, obviously, we have other funding sources where we can fund projects in this neighborhood, where we're not precluded from doing so just because of CDBG funding, but it does seem like a hole that should be fixed. But anyway, do we have additional comments or questions?
I didn't finish.
Oh, you didn't finish. Go ahead, councilmember DeHart.
So Jay, what's the cap on the housing rehabilitation? I think, you know, going down that path, that's a great idea to help people from becoming homeless, and if we can help people. But I heard you say that there, we would be capped out in that line item?
Well, a couple capping out of the line items. The remaining amount of funds is about $290,000 of the overall program. Would fund perhaps 14 residences through that program. And, you know, assuming we would get an allocation the following year, the program could sustain using CDBG dollars for each successive year, as long as the council sees fit. And as you've alluded to, there are other funds the city has that could build on this program and expand it. We have quite a few dollars in our affordable housing funds at the time being. Now, the cap on the, for each household is really driven by getting into more extensive requirements above $25,000. So we're kind of balancing, being able to stretch the dollars to serve more households and address the high costs that some of these projects may have today. By bringing it up, we were initially planning $15,000, as was stated in the staff report, but I think at this point, it's becoming evident that costs may be even higher, and it may have to go up to $20,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Couple questions. On the housing rehabilitation, does it have a higher administrative cost than, than other projects, percentage?
It would be a new cost for us to administer. We currently administer a $1,500 rehabilitation program, minor repair program. So with that, plus, we are fortunate to have our new staff person, Housing Services Administrator, onboard. She has experience with this, and, you know, for 14 cases, believes we could manage that in-house. And if it gets to be many more, you know, we could consider getting some additional contracted help. And when I say in-house, it's, you know, the process of collecting applications, income qualifying documentation, inspecting the projects to happen, and then having the contractors commence the work and following up with the contractors, make sure the work gets done.
Okay. And I know you mentioned that we have a, we have a housing fund, but are there other grants available outside of the city for housing rehabilitation?
There seems to be, for housing rehabilitation, we have not seen a lot of new grants. So CDBG seems to be the primary source of grants for projects like this. Now, that being said, we are seeing new housing dollars appear in many, many different areas. So we're doing our best to keep an eye on that and go after them when, when we can.
If I may, we do have the cap weatherization program, which would allow for, for home renovation funds as well. That's, individuals can apply for.
Individuals, so apply?
To apply for weatherization assistance.
Right, and that's through Community Action Partnership cap.
Okay, so would, do we help residents apply for that? Or is, and because my next question would be, would, do we, do we have the ability to help people apply for a housing rehabilitation as people who are struggling may find it difficult even to go through an application process?
Yes, yes. I think that would not be too difficult since we're all, you know, we could work with each of the applicants to produce the documents necessary. It would be very similar to the COVID Assistance Program we did for business, where actually each of those businesses had to produce leases and tax returns and evidence of hardship. So we're accustomed to working with applicants in that way.
But are we, and are we helping applicants from that other program the mayor mentioned now, currently?
You know, we haven't had many requests for that type of assistance, and I'm a little familiar with CAP, and they've got a very, very large staff there who, who do help with the applications, so.
So I also just want to just make a comment, if it's okay, because when we get to the mid-year budget, we still have $3 million in parks that's not allocated at this point, that previous council did. And I think there's a million and a half in Measure J funds for parks, which has not been allocated, although that may diminish as everything else goes up. And the navigation center, we just gave $3 million to, and we have had other sources. But it sounds like for housing rehabilitation, it's somewhat limited, our other sources.
That's correct. And as you're alluding to, Mayor Protam, shifting those resources is a council prerogative.
So I don't know if there's other questions, but it seems to me that that might be worth looking at, given that there's limited other sources of funds, and it would have a direct impact on residents. But I'm open to, to others.
Do we have comments from other councilmembers on this item? Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you. Watching councilmember Middleton to see if she wanted to go first. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just Mayor Protam, to clarify your comments, you mean the housing rehabilitation program because there aren't other funds like there are for parks and other programs? Okay, thanks, that's helpful. I really appreciate you bringing that expertise in those questions. So I had similar questions about administration, if this is enough money to really administer a program. You know, I know we have other funds, like $10 million for homelessness that we set aside, or housing, and we've set aside other funds as well that we'll talk about in budget. So could you just speak a little bit about the, if the 290 is enough for the staff burden of administering a program?
Well, it's, it's, the 290 would not go towards the staff burden.
If the 290 distributed out to the community and creating a process where staff is doing applications and all the administrative burden, is that enough money to have a successful program, or should we put more money in from a housing fund or something like that?
I think 14 units to start off with would pretty much constitute a pilot program for Palm Springs, and we could get that launched with the current staff capacity. But if it grows and, you know, as we're finding, our waitlist is really much more, much larger than we anticipated, then yes, absolutely, more, you know, more funds for the program would be extremely beneficial. Now administering the program, you know, just to use the example, Ariel, our new Housing Services Administrator, said the program she administered in Colorado was 90, $900,000, I believe, for their, for that program, and she managed it by herself with, using website applications and such, so individuals would apply on the web, and all that information would be there. And of course, working with other departments, but, you know, she was able to lead that process.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful. Just 14 units is such a small amount compared to the number of units that we have total in the city that would need these services. And the administration amount, the 85,000, so would that, that goes to staff overall to budget for that department, right?
Correct.
We can waive that if we want to, right? And pay for that as the city. And then public services, so fair housing, so typically, it doesn't state in the staff report, but usually we give this to the Fair Housing Council, right, that represents, actually doesn't represent, but gives information, I believe, to landlords and tenants, and isn't based locally, though they do a lot of work locally. So we've talked in the past about giving that funding to Inland County's Legal Services, like a legal aid to encourage their presence here. I'm on, I'm still on the board, CVAG Homelessness Committee, and just a flag for the council, we just found out, I just found out this past week, that Inland County's Legal Services, which is, I believe, the only federally funded legal aid in the entire Coachella Valley, has closed its Indio location permanently and is looking for a new location in the desert, but don't have a physical location. They're still providing services to tenants remotely, but that's a huge concern for me. And so just a flag for the council that if we want to help tenants, I always think the best way is to fund legal aid. And I've been really interested in funding legal aid, and councilmember Cora and I before had had conversations with Inland County's Legal Services to see if we could pay them to do tenants' rights clinics or information. The city used to do our Human Rights Commission, as our chair knows, actual mediation with landlords and tenants. So I'm saying this to all, to say that I'm really interested in taking this public services funding and seeing if we can give it to Inland County's Legal Services to see if they'll do clinics in Palm Springs or even locate in Palm Springs with additional funding. So could we explore that so that when you bring it back, you could present information about fair housing versus Inland Counties or other service providers for that public services?
Absolutely.
Cool, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have. You know, I was interested to see, I was so excited about all of our work on parks and investments in the parks, and I was expecting to continue that with CDBG, but I think to Mayor Protam's comment, we have a lot of funding for that because council allocated it, and so I think this is a great project that you've proposed, and I'm happy to support it if the rest of council does.
Thank you. And just on the Inland County Legal Services, I'm also very interested in that. I know I've referred several tenants to the Fair Housing Council in the past, but because they are not attorneys, it ended up finding attorneys through my network to assist on a pro bono basis for these different residents. And obviously, that's, and it, it is actually quite a burden to even connect people to attorneys who are willing to do this work. So if we were able to just send them to a place that does that, that would be a huge, a huge service to our community. The other thing is, for the housing rehabilitation, what is the area median income qualifications for that program?
I couldn't tell you that. So a low-income household of two would be earning up to $64,850. A low-income household of four would be earning up to $70,400. And jumping up to a household of eight, that's $92,950.
Thank you. And for one person? I ask because we have some single people that have reached out and asked for assistance but are concerned that they don't fit into the requirements.
I'm gonna guess that's around $54,000.
Okay. Great, thank you. I think if any way we can make sure that information is clear on our, on our website for, for folks, I think it's in the handouts that you provide.
Right.
But. But I I don't think people always realize that they might fit into the qualifications because some people feel like, I'm, for the most part, that they are comfortable and don't under don't realize that they actually do fit into one of these designations for for funding. Do we need, I don't believe we need a vote on this. Do you have the direction that you need, and is council comfortable with the direction that's been given so far?
Yeah, I just want to say yes, if we could do the housing rehabilitation, to see if we could waive, you know, include the administration into that, set it up as a pilot program so we could review it. And obviously, 54 is not, you know, is not a lot of money, but there's people much below. So I would prefer any way to to get it to really people who are desperately in need and have no other option to the extent possible. And I agree with the other with the public services that Mayor and Councilmember Holstich said.
We could look to prioritize very low-income categories also. It's just when you go from homeownership and identifying those individuals, it there might not be very many, but we can definitely look at that, yeah.
Right. All right, seeing no further comments from council, I think we will move on. Thank you so much, Jay, for your work.
That's very helpful.
Appreciate it. Then, next item on the agenda is Item 3C, An Approval of a Scope of Work and Authorized Request for Qualifications for Architecture and Design Services for the Palm Springs Public Library renovation. I hope our library folks are all watching us on TV. They were very excited. Jeannie, do we have a staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. This item before you is a request to approve the request for qualifications process for a renovation of the Palm Springs Public Library and the adjacent J.C. Frye Building, which sits across the parking lot from the library. The library as it is today does not function for today's needs. We do have a nice-sized library. It's 34,000 square feet, but nothing's where it needs to be. Our community room has a capacity of 90 people. Our story room has a capacity of 32. We have zero small meeting spaces or study rooms. Pre-pandemic, our door count was around 260,000 people per year. We used to have over 300 programs a year, and 10,000 people attended those programs. So just imagine what we could do if we had a world-class library. Imagine the help and services we could offer to our community. This project is truly for the community. The RFQ process will seek highly qualified architects and designers who are experts on library design. By listing a full scope of work in the RFQ process, the designers who apply, first of all, will be aware of the potential scope of the project, and second, will be able to give us realistic advice and cost estimates that the city can then decide which items to include, and the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation can fundraise specific dollars to get those features built. Because we're fortunate to have a $6.5 million matching grant for infrastructure improvements, time is of the essence to get moving on this project. We have until March of 2026 to finish the infrastructure work. Several tasks are not included in the grant, but will need to be done, such as cabinetry, countertops, shelvings, any exterior work, and so on. The Friends Foundation and Library Board of Trustees fully support the listed scope of work and will rally the community to help make this a reality, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Jeannie? Mayor Protem?
So you've added these additional things to the scope of work that were not on previously. Is that correct?
I worked with the Library Board of Trustees, and we developed the scope of work that that's in your packet. We've talked to talked to them. We've asked them what what they want to see, and so this is this is their list.
It's just now, I know this this project's been going on, library, for many, many years. Is this the final scope, do you think? Or are you gonna or is it like, oh, wait a minute, there's something else we didn't put in, we should have, or?
I'll take suggestions if you have them, but but no, I think I think we've we've gone over it several times in recent months with the Library Board of Trustees, also with the Friends and the Foundation, to just make sure that the scope is thorough, thoroughly fleshed out and complete.
Okay, and do you think anything with these new, with this full scope, would delay the grant-funded infrastructure by 2026?
I don't think so. The the infrastructure work is going to have to be done, so the the library's going to be a mess. I mean, really, realistically. So all that work has to be done. If there are things that need to be done at the same time. One item specifically is the Koi Pond. It's a water feature. It's excluded in grant funding. But we know the plumbing is 1975 plumbing. It's gonna have to be redone at the same time. So it just makes complete sense to have to have architects and designers tell us what what should happen and how it should happen, because they're they're the experts. I'm not a I'm not a project expert. I have done this before at my previous work, but but I'm not I'm no architect, so I I don't know exactly what the best way to do this is, but.
But I'm just concerned that any of this, I agree, I mean, I'm not saying I don't agree with the scope of work, but I don't want to delay anything. I don't want to jeopardize the grant in any way, because that work has to be done.
I don't, I I think they'll tell us. The the architects will be the experts, and they will tell us what they think is realistic in the timeline. And and the infrastructure portion has to be done by March of 26, but the putting it back together doesn't necessarily have to be done by that date. You know, putting laying the carpet down on top of the work that's been done can happen in April if it if it gets to that point realistically.
Okay.
I don't I don't like I don't like the idea of going so long, but.
So you could actually move forward with the grant work, and then still, even if the other additional scope of work is not completed, or still?
Especially the exterior, the exterior definitely needs some work. The the physical building itself needs some, needs some work. And so that can happen in April.
Do you have any sense of how much more money you're gonna need, other than what Measure J has put in in the grant?
I I think it's going to be, I I like again, I'm a librarian. But looking at Desert Hot Springs and other libraries, they're about $1,000 a square foot for construction, and we're 34,000 square feet, so we're talking, my ballpark, 34 million. I mean, I don't know. I don't I don't want to scare you, but I also want to be realistic at the same time.
Well, I, yeah, okay.
And again, they'll tell us, they will tell us the amount, the designers.
Okay, and when you look at the scope of work, are you looking at having it item line items so that you could, if it comes out to be, oh, we need $30 million, we could decide exactly which ones is really necessary?
I think that's what should happen. And I know in the 2013 design that we did, we did get real good cost estimates for specific areas and items.
Okay, and I know the foundation has said in various or trustees in various meetings that they think the city should fund this. This is a city building, and it serves the community, and I don't disagree with that. If there is a shortage, are they prepared to help raise funds or donate funds to make sure we do have a world-class library?
I 100% believe that. I mean, you saw the the force tonight. I I I believe it.
Have you looked into the the whether we can do naming rights for certain parts of the library? I mean?
Yes, we're actually working, the city attorney's office is working with the Library Foundation to develop a memorandum of understanding that's similar to what the Plaza Theater is doing.
Okay.
So yes, we're working on that.
Okay, and I have some comments, but those are my questions. Thank you.
We can do comments as well.
Want to finish? Okay, well, so I do agree we should have a world-class library, and this has been going on a very long time. My concern is that adding to the scope will delay things further, and and I don't want to see that. So I would really hope that we can move forward in tandem with the grant work and the scope, understanding that the scope may have to be adjusted depending on the budget. I would also look, despite what they, you know, I know that you said the foundation trustees, I think they should actively start working on it and actively look at things that can be naming rights. I mean, you have a cafe, an event center, children's patio, the book sales space. All of those are seem very good opportunities for people to have their name and a part of our library for generations. And that's something that really should start now, regardless of what else you get, because inevitably, you're gonna fall short of funding, is my guess, just seeing how costs rise and everything. So I am fully in supportive of the full scope, and I I want to see everything. I want to make sure there's nothing that was missed. I want it to move quickly. I want to ensure there's no gap in services to our community, because I would hate to see it. And I know that you've made arrangements, but I would hate to see it, like, certain things not happen for years, because for a kid, years is childhood. So so I'm gonna support it, but those are my comments and direction and. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for those comments. I share a lot of your concerns, too. And by the way, congratulations. Thank you so much for all the staff's work to get this funding from the state. It really is our best opportunity to move forward with what I would like to see, a full renovation of the library. And so I agree, I'd like to see a full process for getting to the the budget that we need. So I understand, you know, this isn't getting us there, but we also have Measure J funds, and we're also moving into budget process to allocate more or save more for that. I mean, it would be nice to know the the philanthropy side of what's needed, so we can start working on that, just like we are with the Plaza Theater. So congratulations. Thank you for your work. This is so exciting, because I do think it's our best opportunity to do a full renovation. And so that was kind of my comments, too. You know, I saw the the trustee conversation about the both buildings and whether to move forward or not. And I saw this, you know, list of non-grant-funded items, and I shared the concerns of is this gonna delay? Or actually, is this getting us to a full and comprehensive renovation? I don't know, because I'm also not an architect, and I don't have plans in front of me. So I think the RFQ is a good first step. And I think that's the question to staff, is should we include all these items in the RFQ as sort of a wish list? And then we can get feedback from the applicants or the RFQ about what is doable. I wrote a little heart next to the new 350-seat event center. You know, like, that's great. I love that. You know, what's the cost gonna be and and all of that? So those are the details that we need. But that was my main feedback, too. I didn't understand, like, the big picture of the process, because I do want to see a comprehensive, at least a a move towards a full renovation, if that makes sense. And just for the public comment as well, people commented about Desert Hot Springs and Coachella's library. Those are both in coordination with the county, who provided significant funding for the county library system, correct? And the differences in Palm Springs, we run our own library system and don't have support and funding from the county.
Absolutely, yes.
Thanks, so just people understand why we can't do that at the same level always. So I think those are those are my own, you know, questions and comments, but very, very supportive of this. I very much want to see it move forward. Oh, as I'm as I'm saying, I have no more comments. I remember I have one more question, which is the children's room. And I all these decisions will come back to us later, is that right? Like, changing the children's room and moving it to the computer room. That's just included in the scope of work. We're gonna get back responses, and then we'll be able to pick and choose from those responses, right?
Absolutely, yes. It's it's your decision.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. I'm excited to have it move forward.
Councilmember DeHart?
So my understanding is we're just approving the scope of work today, right? That's what we're being asked to do?
Authorizing permission to for us to do the RFQ process, that includes the scope of work, so yes, I think.
So then that's gonna come back to us with the funding and the cost and what it's gonna require for items A through CC individually. So, yeah, I'm full in support. You know, we definitely want the library to move forward. I'm in support of of allowing the the scope of work to include these new items that the trustees have identified.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
I agree with the comments of my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jeannie. Oh, Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, because I first of all, I forgot to say thank you for all the work that you and the board and the trustees have done, because I know it's been a lot, and I appreciate it, and I've watched the meetings and how. I did want to mention that, you know, the Measure J Capital Improvement Fund allocation is like about 10 million, and the grant's 16 million. So that now you're looking at a potential 34 million project. So I think we have to actively start seeing where else that money can come, knowing that it's gonna be over. And my second question is, and not to diminish anything from the community, but can things like the cafe or the event center have other revenue-producing opportunities that wouldn't take away from anything from the community, but just make sure they're fully utilized are the things to look at? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much to Jeannie, to our friends of the library, to our Board of Trustees. This is really exciting, and I think this is an important part, right? We need this RFQ to go out so that we can get a desire, an architect who actually has done libraries that are world-class, and not just any library renovation, but we want innovative ideas. And and while we want this scope of work, the architect might come back and offer other opportunities and options for us that we can consider, that maybe we have not considered, because we are so behind in terms of the infrastructure and opportunities that we have at our our library. Jeannie, please, you know, use us as needed for these funding efforts. Obviously, we have budgets coming up where we can fund, but in terms of the additional fundraising that is going to be done, I mean, I I love the library more than any other place in the entire city of Palm Springs. So whatever I can do to assist in in getting this funding, I'm I'm more than willing to to be a poster child for. I still have my original library card with my cursive handwriting. So thank you so much for all of this, and I'd like to, do we need a motion on this? Okay, I'd like to motion that we move forward with the RFQ and the scope of work.
I second.
Second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mia Corner?
Yes.
Mia Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, and I want to say a special thank you to Engineering for all their help in our grant, getting all of that information, and to procurement. We're gonna have a good time, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeannie. All right, we are moving along to our very exciting mid-year budget update, Item 3D. Hi, Chris, welcome to the, welcome to the dais.
Very exciting is right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We have a PowerPoint that we're going to present. The staff report was pretty detailed, especially the capital area. We did condense down the PowerPoint considerably, but obviously, questions about anything and everything, for sure. We'll start off, we got three presenters tonight, myself, I'll cover the general fund. I'll cover capital revenue, a revenue that supports our city's capital projects. Then we'll call up city manager or city, city engineer Joel Montalvo to talk about some of the capital projects. And then we'll finish up with an airport mid-year update with Airport Administration Director Victoria Carpenter. So with that, we'll turn to the general fund. So we'll talk about revenue first. I'm gonna focus on the third major column, which has 2022 year-to-date and 2023 year-to-date, and it compares the two in the next column, given a percentage increase or a percentage decrease. And then we'll talk a little bit about budget as well. So last year, we did a lot of comparisons to last year, because last year was such a good, strong year. We want to kind of see, use that as kind of the base year to see where we kind of stand versus last year. Last year's revenue at mid-year was $69.2 million. This year, 65.8 at mid-year for the general fund. The major was 5% down, and the major decrease would be due to receiving the ARPA fund revenue in the first quarter of last year, which, of course, those were one-time funds, not received for this year. To draw down a little bit on that revenue, all major tax lines for them, except for the cannabis tax lines, are trending up over prior year. So good news so far. We'll start with property tax at 10.3 million, up 10%, on target to be on budget. Sales and use tax, up 7%, 9.5 million. As stated, cannabis tax is down, down from 1.9 to 1.5 million this year. That has been trending down over the past few years. And TOT revenue is down from $17.3 million last year to $15.9 million this year. I'll get to talk a little bit about that in a minute. I'll get to talk a little bit about that in a minute. Utility users tax, up 40%, 6.6 million this year versus 4.7 last year. And then the other major revenue lines are a little bit minor compared to the major tax lines. Let me talk a little bit about TOT for just a minute. It's down 8%. Last year's TOT revenue in total was $54 million. So if we continue this trend to be down, we'll still meet our budgeted target of about 48 million. So a couple of things about that, to just expand on that a little bit. The first five months of the year, we were down compared to last year for the most part, every month. In December of this year, we had about $4.4 million of TOT revenue, which was the exact same as December of last year. Just looking at the January numbers, which are not presented here, TOT revenue was up in January of this year compared to January of last year. So at the end of January, that 8% decline is now 4% decline. So we're coming back. But again, as I've stated here, this is the first six months. The city's, most of the city's revenue comes in the last half of the year, and in particular, the fourth quarter, due to the tourism industry and the tourism business that Palm Springs brings. So while things are looking optimistic and trending well, I think we're still very cautious to say that we're going to meet budget this year. Because it really, I believe in the fourth quarter of last year, our TOT revenue was almost $20 million. So that's a pretty high target. But if we have another strong tourism year this year, as we did last year, then we should either meet or exceed budget on the revenue side. I'll go ahead and move to expenses. So total budgeted expenses were $232 million. We're sitting at about 35% of budget at 80.9 million year-to-date versus 57.2 million last year at this time. A couple of major causes for that. Salary and benefits up 17% or up $6 million. It's not surprising. I did some research today for Mayor Protem and we found out that we started fiscal year '21 with 499 positions. We started this year with 579 positions. So we're ramping up. That will probably continue to ramp up. We have 84 vacancies. So that 17% will probably become more as we go throughout the year. It still appears that we're on target to meet budget. We should still have some vacancy savings. We did build some of that into the budget. But right now, it does look like, even as we continue to hire, it seems like now we're going to be able to be on track to, on budget. Each department, as you can see, is over, mainly due to that and a couple of other things. Coming out of COVID, I think we delayed a lot of facility maintenance projects. So last year, we chose to really increase those costs for facility maintenance expense. This year, about $8 million versus $4 or $5 million in the previous year. So that's ramped up considerably. Same for vehicle purchases. We decided to increase that to $6 million versus $4.5 million in the prior year. So on that particular line item, for those projects identified, we do charge back each department. So each department's expenses did increase for those two items significantly. And again, another reason why each department is up over the prior year. And then lastly, council approved in the fiscal '23 budget, some additional funds to go to the fleet vehicle and facility maintenance funds for future projects to sort of pad those funds. So there's money there to continue to do those facility maintenance deeds and those vehicle purchases. That's totaling about $8 million at mid-year. And with those three things combined, makes up most of the difference between the 80.9 this year and the 57.2 last year. One thing I do want to mention budget-wise is, and it was brought up earlier about the set-asides. So last year, council approved about $24 million in set-asides, which are detailed out in the staff report. To date, we've used 20 and a half million, I'm sorry, we've used 3 and a half million. 20 and a half million is yet to be used. So if we don't use that $20 million, the expense side of the budget will, we won't meet that by 20 million. It would be 210 million versus 232 million. So there's relief to the budget there. However, we will, whatever we don't use this year, we will rebudget in the following year for council to approve. The same set-asides, I will touch on that a little bit. They are just assigned for by council right now. If council chose to take a different direction, they could, and we could do that in the budget process. But yes, for now, unless council makes a different decision, those would be rebudgeted in the same buckets.
For the remaining amounts?
For the remaining amount, correct. So for example, yeah, for example, $10 million has not been used for the affordable housing. If none of that is used, we will rebudget to $10 million again next year.
But that's not automatic.
Right, we will choose that.
Yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah, yeah, it'll be presented to the council in the budget.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to take any more questions on the general fund revenue or expenses.
Then I have questions. In the grant revenue, you mentioned the difference was the ARPA. That accounts for all the 5 million?
Yeah, it was just under like 4.8, 4.9 million.
Okay, because we had 10 million, the first quarter, we had $10 million in grant revenue. And the second quarter was like almost nothing. What are we anticipating for third and fourth quarter?
For grant revenue?
Yes.
So most of the grant revenue that we have in the budget right now is for the navigation center. So it's about $20 million. So we know pretty much that all of that's not going to be used at this point. So the remaining, so for example, there's $5 million that is set aside to run the operations of the navigation center. So that will definitely not be used this year. So talking to Jay earlier, we think there's about $10 million of that $20 million grant revenue that will be probably used this year. So the other 10 million will be rebudgeted in the next year.
But we don't, so we're going to have that revenue regardless?
Yes, absolutely. All the funds are basically accounted for. It's just in what year that we recognize it.
Okay. And the miscellaneous revenue that was down 40%, what comprises that?
It's many different things. It's donations, restricted donations, which largely come from Palm Springs Resorts. And we haven't received any of those donations, I don't think, this year yet. And then their master lease that we have with the Renaissance Hotel. They pay us 1.2 million of, we sublease out a portion of that land and they pay us 1.2 million. And there's various other small sources of revenue in there.
Okay. And the other taxes were for the 23 mid-year total, we're only at 7% of budget. That was on page four.
Let me go back and take a look at it.
Can't see.
Yeah, so that's, oh, sorry, wrong one. Wrong one. The, oh, I guess, let's go through the whole thing.
Sorry.
That's okay. So that's made up of three revenue lines, if I remember right. Franchise taxes that Charter pays us and Palm Springs Waste Disposal pays us for, it's basically rent for right-of-ways to public access for cable lines or sewer waste disposal.
So do you think we're going to make all of that up in this third?
It could be a timing issue. I'd have to look into it and get back with you. But yeah, it could be a timing issue.
Okay. I have some questions, we may leave to comments later. But for TOT, are we collecting TOT on contract sales? I know that was discussed last year by council.
So we are not currently doing that. My understanding, it was discussed, I don't have a lot of history here, that there might have been some direction to do that. And I currently don't know where that stands, but I do know that we are not collecting at this time.
Okay, and you don't know of any reason why we're not?
I do not.
Okay. My next question, just in terms of revenue, this came up, somebody asked me, are we allowing people to pay all their taxes by a credit card and not charging them a credit card processing fee?
That's true. So we do allow payments by credit card. We are not charging them a transaction fee like a lot of.
Could a hotel pay their TOT on credit card?
I believe so.
And we won't charge them a transactional fee? Okay, is there any reason that we couldn't?
No, matter of fact, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's a practice that's widely done these days. We just have to do a little research on what an appropriate transaction fee would be and then probably bring it back to council for approval. And we can approach it that way.
Okay. And I know in the set-asides, that we've talked, affordable housing is something that, and homelessness that council has to work on. We've talked about the parks, waiting for a master plan. What about like the police that we have $4 million for? Is there a reason we haven't spent that?
So my understanding, and you might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that $4 million was set aside for when the study of the police department was completed, then that was going to go to additional headcount hiring until those funds are depleted.
Okay. And then the fleet and facility and the delayed expenses, that was like 11 million. Are those all caught up now or are they still coming in?
We, it's a charge every quarter that we do. So we still got a couple of quarters left to charge back. But at the end of this year, we will have the full $7 million in that fund for facility maintenance and the full $6 million for fleet vehicle to pad the count.
Okay, we had to make up a lot from the COVID period, but now we have, my question is, are we caught back on track again?
Not to my knowledge, we are. I understand there to be a long list of facility maintenance projects. I don't know, I've never seen the list, but I understand there's several million dollars worth of projects to be done. So we're on our way, but we haven't quite got there yet.
Okay, those are my questions, but some comments there.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from council? Okay.
We're ready, okay.
Chris, did you have any?
I don't have anything else on the general fund. I'd like to go ahead and cover the revenue sources for the capital that support the city's capital projects.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I didn't understand the process. Now I do, so I ask you my questions, too. Thank you. So I know we're not deciding this now, but it's more of a comment. But I'd ask what our capacity is to deploy some of those funds that Mayor Protem identified into the budgets, either into the community, into projects, into those departments. Because when we do this, we spend a long time debating how much to retain in reserves and how much to deploy. And I hate to see money just being rolled over on homelessness or home affordable housing when we have crises. For also, to Mayor Protem's point, you know, if police or Parks and Rec or other programs need those funds, I'd rather just deploy them. Because, you know, we could have additional funds to add to those accounts. Could you just tell us a little bit more about fleet? I know it was detailed in the staff report, but it's been a few hours now that we've been going at this. So can, the fleet investments, what do those look like? Those are primarily maintenance of fleet?
No, they're primarily for, so there is maintenance involved in that, for sure. Yeah, so it'll be the fleet vehicle, the staff that supports the maintenance of the fleet. But it's also got some different amount of money for vehicle purchases in there as well.
Right, so I know the council had considered having a purchasing policy for electronic EVs, electric vehicles or other programs. I know we made a mistake when we made huge budget, we made huge vehicle purchases earlier and didn't consider that. So are we considering that when we're doing purchasing of that budget item?
We are working with engineering and sustainability on the infrastructure needed to then get those EV fleets.
Great, thank you. I think all of my other questions are for the other funds. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Chris.
Okay, thank you very much. So just talk a little bit about the revenue that supports our capital. We've got eight major funds, nine if you include wastewater fund, that support the city's capital projects. In the fiscal year '23 budget, that totaled about $66 million. Of that 66 million, we have reimbursement revenue of about 30 million. And what that is, is for a lot of the major road and bridge projects, the engineering department takes on, we get reimbursed from Caltrans at 88.5%. So that's a large amount for a big project, that's a lot of money. The next big source of revenue for capital is our tax revenue. So that includes the gas tax, Measure A, which is a half percent sales tax, the RMRA, which is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act, which is an additional gas tax. And then, of course, we have Measure J, which is the 1% sales tax. So those four funds combined is 26.1 million. We then have transfers from other funds for capital. A lot of that's from the general fund, supporting various capital projects at $6.5 million. We have the CDBG grant revenue that was just talked about by Jay earlier today, 1.3 million. And then we have a couple of impact fees that total about $1 million. And one of those is the Quimby Act, which supports Parks and Rec. And the other is the drainage fee, which supports drainage construction within the city. The tax revenue uses, the gas, the two gas taxes, the gas tax and the RMRA, those are restricted for street improvements, as well as the Measure A fund is also restricted for street improvements. So that's about $6 million. And then the unrestricted 1% sales tax of Measure J is about 20, 21 million dollars a year. I would note, though, even though those funds are basically unrestricted, they're for the most part used for capital. And within that fund, in the fiscal year '23 budget, there is $6 million to decide for street maintenance. So there's additional funds for streets. On the impact fees, the Quimby Act supports Parks and Rec, that's about $700,000, 0.7 million. And then the impact fee for drainage is about 0.3 million or 300,000. And that supports all the drainage construction. And that's my review of the capital revenue. I'd be more than happy to take any questions before I turn it over to City Engineer.
Are there any questions about the capital fund?
Okay, I want to turn it over to Joel Montalvo. He'll talk a little bit about the capital projects.
So good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Joel Montalvo, City Engineer, Engineering Department. So as Chris mentioned, the CIP program is funded by nine different funds. So the slide before you here is a snapshot of the multiple projects that the engineering department is working on at any given time. So I'm going to go through them. Really, what we did is we tried to give the council an update on all the projects. There's about 60-plus projects listed in your attachments. So attachments one through nine actually list all our projects. They tell you how much we budgeted. They actually tell you a brief status and where we're at, how much we're spending. So really, the bulk of my presentation is attached in those attachments. And I would really want to open it up to questions on those. I can go over a little bit of these projects, just to give you a taste of the multiple different types of projects we're working on. So the very first one is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's Cycle 7. Right now, we're actually currently working on Cycle 9. So Cycle 7 is almost already constructed. It included 19 intersections. We were doing traffic signals. We were improving the technology. So Cycle 7 is almost complete. We, we're now working to bid out and get going Cycle 8 and we're designing Cycle 9. So all that funding is, those projects are almost 100% funded by the state. So in particular, HSIP Cycle 7, it was a 3.3 million grant that we got from the state. So it's 100% funded. So if you just go to the next one, it's a completely different project, but the engineering department is also working on. It's the digester number two and gas flare project. That's an $18 million project that's currently being constructed. It's hidden away, nobody sees it, nobody really talks about it, but we are actively working on that project. That one is updating the digester that is almost 60 years old and the gas flare is almost 40 years old.
Can you just explain in layman's terms what that is?
Well, my terminology for wastewater treatment plants isn't all there, but it is part of the functionality of the treatment. So when the sewage comes in, it gets treated and it goes to the digester. So it could actually be consumed by the microbes. So it's part of the whole infrastructure in the digesters, in the actual wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
I didn't study up on all the different components of the wastewater, but the gas flare itself, you know, is actually burning the methane that's produced from the system. But if I knew I would have gotten that question, I would have done a little bit more studying. So I guess the point is being that we have so many different projects that it's hard to kind of be an expert in all of them. So the next one down is our annual slurry seal. So that slurry seal, we completed it last year. Now we're working on the next list. So we'll be spending another one, one and a half million dollars in slurring. So now the Plaza Theater, that's a project that's, it's a city building, but it's. but it's being funded privately and it's being managed by the city engineering department. So we have a team that's actually working on that project, overseeing the architect, working with them, providing reports. And ultimately, we'll also be engaged in the construction of that project. If you go down the Mizele Center, Mizele Center is actually a project that was funded with Measure J dollars. And there was, staff didn't really manage that project. We simply handed a check over to the Mizele Center and we are, we're going to monitor the progress of that project. And when it's completed, we will sign off on it and look to see that they did indeed do what they agreed to do, because we have an agreement with the Mizele Center to do what what they requested for. You go down, there's a city yard roof replacement project. We just completed that as well. So if you go to the community initiated projects, the council last year approved 14 different projects that were community initiated, applied by the community. And some of those projects, staff is actively actively managing. Others, staff is actually just working to get an agreement in place and we hand over the money. And then we ensure that that project gets completed per the agreement. So it's a very, so in itself, that one particular project has 14 distinct projects that we have to review, monitor and help deliver. Now, the the big one that didn't get a lot of fanfare today, but was is really important, it's 20 years in the making, is the Indian Canyon Bridge Replacement Program. That's a $40 million bridge project, $40 million that were. And if you break it down, I included in my staff report that, as Chris mentioned earlier, we're getting 88.53 of the funding from the state and the feds, from the federal highway program, the bridge program. And if everything works out, the city for the construction of that bridge is going to be paying $1 million for a $40 million bridge. That's pretty important and pretty important to bring up. So if you go down a little bit, Palm Canyon Indian Roundabout at Paracella, we're actively working on the design of that project. And then the last one there, as Chris mentioned earlier, we're working right now, currently we're constructing or working on our streets. We're putting about $6 million in the ground to repave our streets. And you keep on going, the very last project there is the navigation center. Again, engineering team working actively managing that project and trying to get it built. So with that, I can open it up to questions, but the real, the bulk of what we're presenting here is in your attachments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember DeHart.
So in the, under the capital projects fund, the way everything is listed, are all the, what order are these projects listed in?
So they're not listed in any particular order other than the year they were conceived. So what we start identifying these project is by the year they they were started. So the the bridge project I was mentioning, that's an 01-11 project. So if you look at the other projects in the handout, they all have a different distinct capital project number. And that that particular number just tells you the year the project was conceived.
Yeah, okay. So how does, for instance, on the H S I P Cycle Seven from 1532, on our chart on the screen, we're showing a total budget of 3.6 with expense of 1.8 and 23. How does that match with the numbers that are written here on the the chart below the graph?
So what particular sheet are you looking at, so I can kind of?
Page 22. I'm just trying to understand how the numbers match up.
So for construction in H S I P Cycle Seven, we had budgeted. Another thing that happens is we budget in different years and we expand in different years. So one of these two might be not aligning, depending on how we pulled the information in. The grant itself was for 3.3 million dollars. I believe the construction of that that project was less, the actual construction contract was about 2.8 if I recall correctly. So the way we're pulling in the numbers in one chart may not have matched what we were what we're showing in the other fund.
Okay, I guess that's going to take me a while to get used to. Let's see, I have another question on. No, that's it, I think that I'm good for right now.
Any other questions from council on this? Mayor Protem.
This has come up to me. Do you, is there any one place where all the capital projects are listed online and their progress for for the public to see?
So this, this is our first attempt at putting all the information in an organized manner that will show it to to the public. So now this is published, it's open to the public, they can see it transparently. But we're also working on a G I S map that will actually show where these projects are located geographically in the city. And you'll be able to click it and pull up the same information. And my hope is to eventually expand it to show schedules and to be able to show anyone that is interested in our projects where it's at in the process.
I think it's schedule is what a lot of people have asked, to see the full scope and when things are actually started and what updates as to where they are.
Right, right.
As opposed to just, because a lot of these are being, are changing monthly. I mean, I don't want to spend a lot of time unnecessarily, but people have questions about specific projects and we're getting an update every six months. Sometimes they'd want to know what's happening in between and what's being spent.
Right, right. And really, the important part of that G I S map is updating the data, right? Because a lot of times you create a data set that doesn't get maintained and the data is just old. It just becomes unusable, unusable and unreliable. So the goal is to maintain that data as well. So we're starting that project fresh. I have one of my engineering staff working on it. He brought them in so that we could start showing that to the public and maintaining it. One of the hardest things to show really is schedule. And that's one of the one points that I think I'm always brought, it's brought to my attention. You know, what is the schedule? So I'll repeat, the Indian Canyon Bridge started in 2001. And all along the line, everybody was asking what's the schedule? So in 2013, we would have been done by 2015, 2018. In 2018, I'm sure the engineers would have said, yeah, we're going to be building it in 2019. In 2021, I thought I was building it in 22. I'm in 2023 and I'm just awarding that project. But and you take that and expand it over 70 projects or 60 projects, and it has a little bit of that in every single one of them. So our schedules are very difficult to predict. When we start designing them, we get our architects, our our design team to tell us what the schedule would look like. What do we, and then when we get that, within the six, three, four months, the schedule changes and it's constantly. So it's, that's what I'm saying, the data sets that we produce just have to be maintained. And we need the the staff to do it, which I'm working on.
Okay, and there's, there's a lot of remaining balance in capital projects in all different areas. To what extent are those things that are just, that are in progress, we just haven't had to pay for them yet versus we haven't done them yet?
So you can probably track, the ones that are not started, those are the ones that essentially I've listed, we haven't done anything on. The other ones, we're in in a certain phase. So there are, I think there's a line item in here on top of them that says unscheduled funds. Is that really what you're asking?
No, no, it's, we have $76 million left in remaining balance of capital funds project. And Measure J, I think, has $40 million left that is remaining balance. And so my question is, how much of that is going to be used within, that is, that is budgeted for this year, that's going to be used within year or versus not?
Well, that's a difficult question to answer, but we revisit it when we work on our five-year C I P. So the the purpose of the five-year C I P is to try to show the trajectory of a project over the five years. And as we budget every year, we try to figure out how much we're spending. The goal is, at the end of the five, of when you project to have your project in construction, that's when you've acquired all your funds. So some of these are in that category. So they're three, four-year projects that I'm building up the budget to be able to finalize construction at years.
So setting aside the amount.
Right, essentially.
So this, this came to me specifically, though, because for the street paving, we've got $9 million budget and we've spent $8,000, which.
Right.
Obviously, this is being done, so.
Yeah, we awarded a contract, it's a six-month or so project. We just gotten our very first invoice from the contractor. So within the next three, four months, we're going to be drawing down those funds.
Okay, so that should, that should go there.
Yes, so we awarded a contract. When council works a contract, that money is now set aside for that construction project.
Right, right.
We just need to be, get invoice, right? Some of the federal projects, we get invoiced every three, four, five months, right? And then we go and try to get it back from the feds in in the next two, three months after that. So there's a lag between when we're spending the dollars, when we're actually paying them out and when we're actually getting reimbursed from the federal or state government.
Okay, my last, this is a huge amount of projects. And I really, and I know how involved many of these are. So this, I can't imagine having to juggle all of these. To what extent are you not able to do things because you don't have the staffing resources? You have the funds to do it, but not staffing resources to manage it or oversee it?
Right, it is, it is obvious, right? That you can't build 70 projects with the, you know, limited staff that we have. I have a good team of engineers. I did lose my principal engineer just recently, who was very helpful in running a lot of our projects. It is hindering to not have the staff. The flip side is, we look for staff and we, there aren't enough engineers interested in coming to the public side. I've put out a lot of, you know, requests or advertisements and we get maybe one. I run it for three, four months and and sometimes they're not qualified. So it's very difficult to get staff. And I know that the the logical progression is going to be, well, why don't you hire consultants? But we are working with consultants. And in order to manage a consultant, you need an engineer to, or someone on my staff to hire to manage the consultant. You can't just let consultants run, do the work by themselves, because you just need to carefully manage them, because projects go completely south. To that end, we are also hiring, I stopped trying to look for engineers and now we're looking for project managers. Folks that are in the industry, can can manage a project, know construction, and they work with us to deliver projects. So I have a project manager on board and we're actively engaged in in bringing in the second. So those two project managers, working under my engineers with my assistants, are going to be able to deliver the smaller projects.
Okay, and just given how fast costs are rising, obviously, it's better to do things sooner rather than later, just because.
Right, right.
By the time you get to it, it's double the amount.
Right.
And my, my only last thing is, for Measure J, you know, as I know this is required by the ordinance that they make recommendations before we adopt our new budget next year. Are they on track to make recommendations this year? I know there was a snag last year.
There was a snag last year. We've gotten back on an agenda where we will be bringing, working with them to bring recommendations. We did, we, we weren't able to have our meeting this past month, but we are going to, we're going to get back on track in March. And I think earlier it was mentioned or alluded to that Measure J is a big proponent or a component of funding a library, right? So there's a lot of dollars there that could be given to one or two projects instead of trying to spread them out amongst a lot of projects. So that could be a discussion we have with the Measure J Commission.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much for this, it's great work, thank you.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you for those questions. Those were really helpful, because I also had written, you know, ways to increase capacity for these projects. And I appreciate you and your department doing an excellent job managing all of this in just a number of projects. So, yeah, I would love to continue to try to solve that problem for our city. So thank you for your work in hiring project managers, et cetera, that you stated. So my interest, or maybe council's interest that they shared with me, is identifying which dollars will roll over and which actually will be deployed in this fiscal year and this budget, right? So you just indicated that through your questions and your answers. Like there are some that are in design or bidding and, you know, different phases where they actually will be used. And then there are some that just say not started. So is there, I'm not an accountant or a engineer, but is there a helpful way that we might indicate that to councils, just so we can understand, you know, what's actually going to be deployed in the fiscal year? I heard you saying it's complicated and hard to predict. But, you know, ways that we can look at this chart and just say, these aren't going to be deployed and we have excess and, you know, X amount.
So, again, I guess I'll go back to the five-year C I P. That is the tool that I have to be able to show council where we're at in the process and which projects I will be needing more money. So every year, for the last three years, I've been bringing a five-year C I P where I show.
Thank you.
In the first fiscal year or in the, basically, year one, this is the amount of money I predict I'm going to need and I'm going to be able to spend. And obviously, depending on schedules and what goes on, we don't always get to spending that entire dollar amount. So then it does roll over to the next year. So the the five-year C I P is a tool where we are able to show that. And maybe this year, we can look at a different way to to show it better, to to clear. So that's about the only way I could answer that question, I guess. The five-year C I P is the tool that I use to be able to show how much money I expect to spend in the next fiscal year.
For example, I have, just have to ask, because we got asked about the pickleball courts, right? So that's 19-06. I'm sure you got public comments and emails about that. So that says scope development. So there's a remaining balance of a large amount and very low amount that's been expended, so.
Right, so that's a perfect example of how I I use the five-year C I P. So in the five-year C I P for the pickleball courts project, there's two funds that I'm using. I'm using Quinby funds and I'm using Measure J funds. So in year one, I knew with my staffing level, the projects that I had before me, the decisions that the Parks Commission had to do, the Parks Director also has to weigh in. I knew that in year one, which is this fiscal year, I was only going to spend maybe around 300,000, but that's if everything lined up and I had the project already moving. I think we're in scope development, which which means that the Parks Director is working with an ad hoc committee, working on developing the final scope of that project. And engineering doesn't really move on a project until that scope is completely final and then we can actually move it into design. So we haven't burned the 300,000 this fiscal year because it's still in that trajectory. And and from what I understand from the Parks Director, around September is when we'll be issuing the R F P for design. So, and she has already presented to the the full Parks Commission her schedule and what, how she feels this project is going to go. So in the C I P, if you looked at it, or the next fiscal year, I got about 1.1 million dollars. So I expected to be in construction next fiscal year. So the pickleball courts is actually fitting specifically and perfectly how I designed it in the five-year C I P.
Thank you, that's helpful. I have no further questions. Thank you. Any additional questions for our city engineer? No, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor Gardner, Mayor Protem Bernstein and council members. I'm here to present the mid-year budget update for the airport operations and maintenance. As you may know, the airport plays a crucial role in the economic growth and development of our city. I am pleased to report that the airport's revenue through December in fiscal year 2022 was 12.4 million dollars. This year, we have a significant increase in revenue through December in fiscal year 2023 for a total of 25.8 million dollars. This increase can be attributed to a number of factors, including a 6% increase in flights and a 13% increase in passenger seats. I would also like to note that the airport received about 12 million dollars both in CARES and ARPA Act funds, which have been instrumental in helping us maintain our operations. Furthermore, I'm pleased to report that the airport's public parking has increased by 13% over prior year. This indicates that more passengers are using the airport's parking facilities and reflects a positive trend in passenger traffic. Additionally, on-airport rental car fees increased by 4% over prior year. This is a good sign for the airport, as it indicates that more passengers are choosing to rent vehicles from our onsite car rental providers. For fiscal year 2023 through December, the airport has achieved 55% of the operating revenue budget of 47.1 million dollars. In terms of operating expenses, we are on track to meet our budgetary goals for the year. Our team has worked diligently to maintain a lean and efficient operation while still providing a high-level service to our passengers. Through December and fiscal year 2022, operating expenses were 10.9 million dollars. And through December and fiscal year 2023, operating expenses are about 12.8 million dollars, a 17% increase from the prior year. It is worth highlighting some key points regarding the operating expenses. Since the pandemic, the airport has increased hiring to support operations, which has resulted in payroll increases by 11% over the prior year. Additionally, operational costs increased by 15% when compared to prior year. And lastly, quarterly administrative fees to the city increased by about 31% compared to the prior year. Overall, the fiscal year 2023 operating budget is 31 point, excuse me, 35.1 million dollars. And the airport has obligated and/or expended 36% of its budget. Looking ahead, we are optimistic about the future of the airport. We have a number of exciting initiatives planned, including the expansion and improvement of our facilities. These projects will not only improve the passenger experience, but will also have a positive impact on the local, the local economy. We will continue to prioritize the safety and well-being of our passengers, employees and community, and we look forward to working with the city council to ensure the success of the airport. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Victoria. Do we have any questions regarding the airport? Do we have any questions regarding the airport? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
First of all, I thank you for this and I thank you for running it so well. I mean, the airport is probably, with tourism being our number one driver of revenue, this is probably the most important aspect of it and making sure it works. And I know there's been a lot of challenges lately with the baggage and with TSA and space and various issues. And I would just say that maintaining a good, you know, fiscal prudence in how we do things is great, but I want to make sure that we manage our airport in a way that's gonna accommodate the growth and allow for growth in our tourism while also respecting the community as well. So, and we want to make sure we have a beautiful airport, it's right in the center of town, that the operations of it for the passenger experience are not, we don't cut back on it all, but thank you for this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other questions? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Picking up on the Mayor Protem's comments, we've got a number of very important capital improvements that need to be made to the airport. What, do you have the staffing that you need in order to be able to manage the projects that are coming up?
We are working on that with the city department, human resources, on getting the additional staff that we need, that we were approved for in July. And then we do intend on budgeting for additional staffing for the upcoming fiscal year 24 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. And I do think the airport fund is the most complicated one, at least in my opinion, that we see. So I'm still trying to understand it fully. So I see the capital projects fund, and thank you for including those. One of my favorites, the airport common use and carpet removal and renovation, very exciting. And I was just wondering if there's a fund, excuse me, if there's like airport beautification programs that we also need to include? You know, we've talked about art in the airport. I'm still trying to fully understand how, you know, I know FAA and there's other funding that we're required to use for beautification of the airport, but I'm really interested in airport beautification and ways to include that. So I would probably put like the carpet renovation in that category, or are there other things that we should be thinking about as projects or include in budgeting for the next fiscal years? Especially because though our funds are separate and legally we'd have to look, right? But we do have an arts fund, for example, or there are other city funds? So I'm just interested in airport beautification in a way that increases and betters the user experience.
Yes. So I can comment on that. I know that we are working with the Arts Committee and even the Palm Springs Museum, Art Museum, on getting some additional art into the airport. And even working with our local Palm Springs Air Museum, they have some additional airplanes that we, we've had some ideas that we threw around about maybe hanging a plane inside of the RJ or just kind of throwing out ideas there. So, but yes, we could definitely take a look at airport beautification and arts fund for our fiscal year 24 upcoming budget.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chris, do we have more? That concludes the presentation. All right.
Thank you.
Do we have additional questions or comments from council on any part of the presentation? Mayor Protem, go ahead.
So a couple of things. I am somewhat, I am cautiously optimistic about the third and fourth quarter, but I am a little bit concerned. We saw last first quarter drop off a lot, and I am concerned that that would move into May and June, which would be our fourth quarter. And our staffing is going up and we, that obviously is ongoing expenses. So a couple of things, just in terms of planning. The cannabis industry, I know it keeps dropping, and I would suggest that we, as a council sort of, or as a city, look at this industry that is relatively new and see what might need to be done to help nurture it and reassess it and any other changes to ensure that we have a healthy sector of that economy. Now that grants are probably getting a lot harder, I would make, I would ask that we have a renewed focus on some of the grants that may not be so easy to get as they were with the pandemic funds. I would ask that whatever we need to do to start collecting TOT on contract sales be done so that we have that revenue. And if we can start charging credit card processing fees, so long as we provide an alternate method of payment that doesn't incur fees, that we do that. And then the last thing, I know I brought this up in several meetings about having a percentage of the vacation rental or other TOT to affordable housing. Ideally, I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than wait for the new budget year, especially with April probably being the strongest month of the year, if we could get something before that. Just especially as we look into the long term, if there is any kind of slowdown in the economy and we have all of our expenses, that a lot of them will be hard to cut back, that we, we don't end up having to cut on affordable housing because we don't have that revenue. So those are the things I would like to see. I don't know how we do the percentage of TOT, if that's something that we can decide. Do we need to fully report? Can we decide to do it? What do we have to do?
We actually have discussed, and Chris will be bringing forward a report in late March, early April?
Yeah, yeah, something like that. And I think it would just be a formal assignment by the council and then we could assign those funds.
And also Jay Verada said he'd be involved in that process as well. So our acting finance director will be involved as well.
I apologize for interrupting. When is the earliest it could take effect then?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I believe it's just an assignment of funds that could take effect immediately, so I will check and confirm that, but I believe it's just an assignment of funds by council that can take effect immediately.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's a financial policy that the council would adopt.
Okay. So I would vote the soon, if we can get it, get the April revenue, which is obviously the, which is the strongest TOT month. If we can get it before that, it doesn't, doesn't affect our tourism industry, it's just how we allocate internally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you. I just want to clarify your comments about, which I completely agree with and support all of your comments. Thank you for making them. Your comments about credit card fees, so I heard that to be about TOT and maybe other fees charged to businesses, is that correct? How broad in scope? Because I know we also have protected fees to residents and minimizing the cost to residents, like parks and rec programs, et cetera.
All, all I'm suggesting is that the credit card processing fees that the city currently incurs, so people can pay by credit card, that the payer incurs those, but they could always pay by debit, by electronic funds transfer or whatever that doesn't incur a fee. But we're actually paying, we as a city are not charging fees that we are paying out to the credit card companies, which to me, as far, everybody I know now has started charging, has started to charge credit card fees. And as long as we provide a easy mechanism to pay with electronic funds transfer or other means, that, that doesn't make it a burden on the community, I think that's something that we should do.
Thank you. I support that except for fees that we charge to residents for parks and rec and maybe an assessment from staff about what would be appropriate fees to charge that on or not. Thank you for those suggestions.
Great. I'm gonna jump in since it looks like others have made comments already. I agree with many of the comments that have already been stated. I do want to make sure that we are looking at some of these allocations that we've made that we haven't yet spent. I do think that's really important. I know that some of this is upcoming, for instance, our Parks Master Plan and setting aside, actively setting aside money so that we can implement it quickly once we have it. But I think that's something tangible, right? We set aside that money because we knew we wanted to do this big project versus some other funds where we did put money into a housing fund, but we didn't decide more specifically how we would deploy those, those resources. So I want us to be more concrete in, in those decisions. It's shocking that we're actually coming up to a year of making those decisions and those funds haven't actually been, been discussed and allocated, and I hope that we don't, we don't do that again. I appreciate that there's gonna be updates regarding the capital projects because those, those really are the most, the questions that we get so often. And I understand it's a moving target, but any, anytime we can give clarity on where something is in the process, I think it does help residents to just understand. And I agree with Councilmember Holstich's exception for the credit card fees in terms of, of parks and rec or situations in which residents are trying to get a benefit for themselves and their families versus paying TOT. And of course, I also want to see the housing, the TOT come to a housing fund as soon as we can. I think that makes a lot of sense. Is there any additional information that staff needs from us in order to move forward on this?
I think we have good direction, council, mayor.
All right. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. It was really great work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember DeHart, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, most of our direction is gonna come out of the budgeting process as I understand it. But the comments tonight about the credit cards, I think, you know, that's, that's opening up a much bigger conversation because if we just look at Parks Rec's charges, what about the small businessman or woman who's paying $90 for their business license? Should we be absorbing that credit card charge, just as we're absorbing the credit card charge for somebody at Parks and Rec? So I think, I think we need to take a bigger look at what's that spread that we're going to want to look at waiving charges versus incorporating, in adding charges on top of the transaction? So is it at much higher permit levels? So I think we need to give some more thought to that. So we're not excluding, you know, other marginalized folks or small business individuals that are trying to, to do business in the city.
Councilmember Middleton.
No comments at this point.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we've got the direction that staff needs, and we are on to our last item. Item 3E, which is a discussion regarding regulatory approach to managed co-owned properties. And this one is specifically regarding Picasso. We do. Yeah, if, if, do we have any public comment, city clerk?
We do not have any public comments.
All right. Well, then we'll just cross that off. There's no public comments and we will continue on to 3E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This agenda item before you is to provide you with an opportunity to further discuss a regulatory approach, if any, to managed co-owned properties within the city. As set forth in the staff report, co-owned properties is a business model that Picasso currently operates under, which allows an ownership split of up to eight owners of a single property for shared use through an LLC. In March of last year, council was not inclined to allow this type of ownership absent a regulatory framework to address potential negative impacts. Those included, but were not limited to occupancy numbers, parking, and noises. There's also concern about potential impacts as to the affordable housing in the city. In response to ongoing discussions between Picasso and the city, Picasso provided a proposed regulatory ordinance, which is before you and included in the agenda packet. And I'm happy to go through the details of the proposed ordinance, or if you prefer, I can answer questions as you discuss it. But this item is simply before you for discussion and further direction on a possible regulatory approach as to these types of co-owned properties.
Thank you so much. Do we have questions on this item from council? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. City attorney, the proposal that we have here is one that was developed by Picasso working with city staff. Is this specific only to Picasso or the regulations that you are presenting to us, ones that would apply to any other firm that would come in to do business in this area?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Middleton. You, this is a broader, as proposed at least, this is a broader application, a broader proposal for a regulatory framework that would go beyond Picasso and to other similar companies that operate in the same way that Picasso does, which is purchasing a property, that property being transferred to an LLC, and then ownership being split amongst eight, I think the proposed regulation or proposed ordinance says 10. That's something else that you can discuss, a limit on how many individuals you would want in, you know, in the event that you do want to move forward with a regulatory approach.
Second question that I have is the management enforcement of these rules, will that be done by the vacation rental department? Are we going to be relying on PSPD to provide enforcement?
So that's up to you and, you know, we can take your direction on that. But I believe that we have made a distinction between vacation rentals and a different regulatory approach in the event that you want to move forward with that. We would ask that there be some direction on what type of enforcement mechanisms you would want in place that would be shouldered by city staff.
Is there anything that would prohibit us from being able to use our vacation rental code enforcement officers to enforce this ordinance if it was approved?
If it was approved, we would just make those clarifications in the approved ordinance that those specific enforcement officers would also be officers enforcing the ordinance for this type of co-ownership.
Those are my questions. I have a few comments when it's appropriate.
Thank you. Do we have other questions? If not, we can move to comments. Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I'd just like to get clarification on a couple, so the public is well aware too. The, what are the number of occupants that are gonna be regulated per, in these rentals or the homes that are being purchased?
Sure. So the proposed ordinance by Picasso has the occupancy capped at two people per bedroom.
So, and isn't, is the homeowner allowed to have short-term rentals?
So, at least how Picasso does it, and again, this is up to you, but yes, there would be a shorter duration of time other than the 30 days for, that are, that the current restriction is.
No, I think is the homeowner, the homeowners of this, this house in particular and the ordinance that we're talking about, they would not be able to have a short-term rental.
I'm sorry. You are correct. So it's, it's limited to the ownership of the individuals that share ownership of the property, so ownership of individuals that are part of the LLC.
Okay. And the owners are not allowed, or they would not be permitted in the current policy to provide for loaning of their time in the house to a friend or somebody else that wanted to use it and the owner was not there, right?
That is correct.
And the, another concern that I heard that we've received was about loud noise from events that would be held on property. Doesn't, what is included in the ordinance that would prohibit large events?
Yeah, so under the proposed ordinance, there would be prohibitions on weddings and commercial events at these co-owned housing units. And again, we can, you can provide us with direction to seek better clarity on exactly what you think is appropriate as far as events at these specific properties.
Yep. No, I appreciate it. I'm just seeking clarity on what, some of the concern that's been expressed. I, I'm just seeking clarity on what, some of the concern that's been expressed from the community. Another one is that it's going to add to parking congestion in the neighborhood and that this type of home is just going to bring in a lot of extra traffic on the street. What, what's going, how is parking going to be handled?
So under the proposed ordinance, all occupants of these co-owned properties would be required to park vehicles on the property. And that includes obviously the individuals that own it and any guests that come.
And in the conversations with staff attorneys and, and the Picasso representatives, the, the restrictions and the penalties that have been put forward, are those, is that penalty structure something that we pushed on to Picasso in particular? Or is that something that those penalties, because they're rather severe? And I think they're, they're, they're good regulation. So where did that come from?
It's a good question. I wasn't involved in all of the discussions with Picasso, but this is a part of their proposed ordinance, so it's something that they're willing and amenable to accepting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, or Mayor Proton Bernstein, did you have something?
So question, so you can't have commercial events, but you could have parties that, as long as you're within the noise ordinance, right?
Yeah, I mean, under the proposed ordinance, there's no specific restriction to guests that come over. The occupancy limit is for overnight, overnight stays. So there could be people coming over during the day and there's no specific limitation to that. But yes, it's specific to the events. There's no, under the ordinance, there's no weddings or commercial events.
Right, but they could have parties all the time. And again, so the owners always have to be present. They can't let family or friends stay without them.
That's how I understand the proposed ordinance.
Okay. Can the owners be, or the shareholders be companies or LLCs? Or do they have to be individuals? No, I know the, I know the LLC owns the whole thing, but can the share of it, the eighth share be held by a company or an LLC?
You know, I think the ordinance is silent as to the different types of ownership within the LLC.
Okay. But in that case, the owner could be a company as opposed to an individual. I mean, if, if, I don't know, if Golden Voice decides to buy a share in it, then how does that work with what they, the owner being present? I don't actually have, I don't actually know what that would do, but what?
Sure. If we have the Picasso folks here, so if they'd like to answer that question, then that's fine.
Hi. Poor Vidoshi with Picasso. In response to your question on who, we only sell shares to individuals. So two shares cannot be owned separately by a husband and a wife. They have to own the share together. We don't sell shares to corporations.
Okay. So the husband and wife, one of them would always have to be there if they're, if it's their time slot.
If it's their time, they have to be there if they're going to have, you know, friends over. And also, you know, to answer your question about the parties, we do have a good neighbor policy that all of our owners agree to. And it says that, you know, they can't have any parties, they can't have amplified music in the backyard. That's not written in the ordinance, but that's something that we have our owners agree to.
But that is something that you'd be amenable to having in the ordinance?
Yeah. We want to be careful because our owners, they do own the property, so they should be able to use the home as an owner would use it. So, you know, I, I, I think we would want to be careful about how that language about, you know, having guests over and, you know, having, using their communal space in the outdoors isn't restricting their use of a home as a, as a homeowner.
The idea was that, that our homeowners would be subject to the same, they can hear me.
It's, it's for the public. They can't, other people can't hear you.
Our owners would be subject to the same, if, if I got together with three people and bought a house, that our owners would be subject to the same city limits, city ordinances.
And the owners can sell their shares after a year, is that correct?
Correct.
And after that, is there any limit on buying and selling?
There is not, but we haven't had enough data to, you know, be able to show you a pattern.
Okay. And then some questions maybe for the city. So I know of at least one block in the city where there's one house on each side of the street, which is what hap, you know, in big, in wealthier neighborhoods with bigger houses, that does happen. Do we have any idea how much that happens?
As far as the current, currently?
Like there's a block and there's one house that faces east, one west, one north and one south, and they, there's only four plots on the block. So that would mean four potential houses.
So yeah, under the proposed ordinance, the restriction that they're amenable to is limiting this type of property ownership to one home per block.
Okay. So the big question, the, the penalties are somewhat severe, but if the, if they don't have, they don't have to use Picasso, right? They could get someone, another managed property who may not be as, as good a player. And then if they don't abide, what recourse does the city have? With vacation rental, we could obviously take away the permit. What recourse would we have with this?
Under the proposed ordinance, there is a possibility to revoke the permit that would be issued. So under the, under the regulatory scheme, there would be a permit that's issued by the city for management of these co-owned properties. And so you could, you could revoke, if, if administrative penalties were not enough, you could revoke the permit issued by the city for the operation of that property.
And, and what does that do? And what is the, the effect of that?
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, we've provided an opinion that, you know, without an ordinance in place, that these are considered timeshare properties, which would be restricted from certain residential zones. So I think that would be up to you to decide what happens then if it's, if the permit is revoked and then this now co-owned property under this regulatory ordinance is outside of it and, and not in a proper residential area, right? Not in, in an area that's allowed. What would, I think the question comes back to what direction would you have for us to do in that situation?
I don't actually have an answer to that, but maybe the lawyers and council do. And in terms of the, the fees that we're doing, there's just the $5,000 permit fee, is that right? There's no other, other monthly or 10?
I think there's, I think there's an initial fee and then an annual fee.
Okay.
For each property.
But not like a vacation rental or timeshare fees that the city gets? What's that? By the tax, there's no tax on the stay because there's no pay?
There's, yeah, there's, because these are owners, then they're not, I think the report by the city attorney kind of defined it as semi, semi-transient as opposed to a very distinct difference from STRs in the report.
Okay. And my last question for city attorney is that if, if another company came in and wanted to do this and we've set the ordinance and they claim that, well, it's discriminatory not to allow poor people to buy shares like this, is that, can we, are we still okay? I mean, someone came and said, well, you're not allowing people, eight people to buy a below median income house and they might not be able to afford a higher one?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a justifiable regulation by council that's within the city's police powers.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Holstidge. The Supreme Court has found that, that income discrimination against poor people's not a protected class. Really interesting as we think about like who we protect. So I follow up on those questions. So corporate ownership, so Picasso doesn't own, allow corporate ownership for the initial purchase. It sounds like if they were to rescind the Picasso management and then resell their shares, the city might have an interest in banning corporate ownership like we did with vacation rentals. So is that currently in the ordinance or do we need to add it? And what are the impacts to that?
I'm not sure if it's that specific in the ordinance, but we can certainly add it and bring that back if that's council's direction.
You know, it's complicated. Obviously, a lot of people hold their assets in an LLC and so it does get complicated. But I do like the policy that we did for vacation rentals, which is at least to identify the actual person and require actual persons for ownership, because I think what we want to avoid, which your business model is not, is like you said, corporate buy-up of our housing stock. I had a question about how the block is defined. I think you asked this question, but I didn't understand the answer. So how is block defined if that is a restriction?
Just if I can answer, they define it as one street on each side, basically, so...
So as long as the continuous street, like the physical city block?
Yeah, I think the proposed ordinance is silent as to what's, how a block is defined. So we can certainly add a specific definition of block for this ordinance.
And I'm not sure if that's the right thing to do. It's already complicated of an ordinance to administer, so I don't want to make it more complicated. But I'm just wondering, is that, I thought that was a good question. Obviously, some neighborhoods have much larger blocks than others. So that might not be, I know you, you've discussed it. I don't know if that's the best way to regulate. If we're trying to get to an over-concentration issue, block is the right idea?
We threw out the idea today that maybe a cap instead of the one per block might be another avenue to do this with. And we had thrown out the idea of maybe, you know, 50 a year for three years trial to see how this goes. The real problem is we want to make sure that as this goes, and there's no way we're going to do 50 houses. I mean, it's virtually impossible. I mean, don't forget, Picasso puts out all of the cash to buy these houses upfront. So just, just by that, the very nature of it, we could never do that many houses. The only reason we would want a higher cap is because this ordinance is going to be looked at by other cities across the country. So let's say we wanted to go in and do homes in New York, for example. They're going to look at a, a cap that we did here, which is not going to make a whole lot of sense. So just in terms of precedent for, for Picasso's future development, we'd like to see a higher number if we do the cap instead of the one per block.
Just for the public to understand, how many does Picasso operate in the city of Palm Springs now?
Five.
Thanks.
Five homes.
Right? Some cities are doing actually a percentage of the housing stock for vacation rentals, right? We discussed that concept too. Okay, thank you.
But don't forget, we also have the two times median income, median sales price, home price in there also. So we can't buy a house, let's say at the median price is $900,000, we can't buy a house under 1.8. So that's also kind of restricts how many homes we can actually purchase.
So on the block, the definition of block on page 27, it says, shall not issue more than one housing permit per block for this purpose. The block means one side of a street between two consecutive intersects, intersecting streets. So it doesn't go to, you had pointed out a corner. If somebody could be on a corner, you couldn't have somebody on four corners because it would not meet this definition.
No, no, what I'm, I'm sorry if I said it wrong then. What I was saying is that there are blocks, four streets, and there's only four plots within that, each one faces a different street.
Oh.
So all four of those technically could be under this.
As long as they met the classification of two times median income.
But in, in higher, in higher end areas. What's that?
That's all of Las Palmas.
I mean, all Las Palmas, there are people we know who live on a house on a street where they face one side, their neighbor faces the other, third one is the other, fourth one's the other, there's four houses and that's it. So I'm just, just saying that.
In, in theory, that, that could be true, but that's in reality not, A, something we would probably even want to do. And B, again, as Brian mentioned, I think we have a lot of restrictions and self-restrictions in place as to why we wouldn't, you know, purchase certain homes on the same street or in the same block.
Yeah. And just to be clear, that this is, some of this, a lot of this discussion is not about you, but it's about creating something that anyone else could come do. And that's, that's where, I mean, you have shown a good faith effort to make this work. There is, it's clear. So of the discussions that some of the discussions we're having have to do with, well, then Mr. Bad Faith comes in, or Miss Bad Faith, or Ms., and, and it's not the same thing. So that's what, that's what we're trying, I, I'm struggling with.
Yeah, we totally understand that.
Forgot to say, I think we definitely do want to add in what Councilmember Holstidge was saying. We need to include the non-corporate ownership definition, that an owner is not a corporate entity. Because I don't think that's here in the current proposal.
We're, we're totally fine with that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I think at this time, we're going to move into council member comments, but thank you so much. Councilmember Middleton, I think you had comments.
I do have a couple. So let me, I think this is a vast improvement over what we were looking at in March of last year. And I compliment staff and Picasso for coming back with something that conceivably can work. I would like to see that our vacation rental enforcement is responsible for enforcing this ordinance and we work out whatever fees we need to have to be able to do that. The revocation of a permit to operate is going to be a major step, but I think we should have that as a potential. And I very strongly agree with comments from my colleagues that it should only be individuals that can purchase shares in this. My understanding is, and we got some comments from a couple of folks who are in HOAs, that the only way that an HOA property could be a, a part of this program is if the HOA rules made it, made it possible for them to be a part. Last comment that I have is, well, actually two. I'm not entirely convinced that block is the way to go in terms of limiting. I'm much more inclined towards a cap and with all due respect, I don't think 50 a year is realistic by any means. But the, I would like to see us take and have a two-year review of the actual workings of what happens. We're charting, charting new ground here. Let's put something together that we know we will come back and take another look at based on actual facts on the ground as to how well it's working. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional comments from council? Go ahead, Councilmember DeHart.
You know, I spent a lot of time going over the feedback that we got from residents and their, their comments about this industry. And, and I think the more we learn, the more that the concerns that have been expressed are, are really, we can calm some of that concern. Specifically, you know, on some of the key issues, you know, we're not going to have an entity like Picasso become the largest homeowner in the city. It, it just isn't going to be, it's not possible when they're, they're only going to be purchasing homes that are two times the medium cost of a house. And, you know, the, that is, there is a limit there on, on the number of homes that are even available. So I think that's one of the concerns. Another concern that I heard frequently was that, you know, the, the, the sense of community and neighborhood is going to change because we allow this type of homeownership. And I think from even what we heard... And I think from even what we heard tonight and what's in the, the staff report, if current second home ownership users are using a home maybe five to six weeks on average out of the year, you know, a Picasso plan, the Picasso model, is going to give a neighborhood a greater sense of neighborhood presence because we learned that the Picasso home is, has 80% occupancy. So we'd, we'd go from only being occupied 11% out of the year to having a home that's occupied 80% of the year. So I think that sense of neighborhood is going to continue. We will, we will have a greater sense of neighborhood with this type of a home versus somebody who is just a second homeowner. And another point is, I think, you know, how many homes do we already have multiple owners on the titles? Well, that was a question that the city couldn't answer, but we clearly have many homes where there's multiple owners on titles as, as it exists, not even counting trust. So I think this is, we, we have a situation where we currently are having people buy homes together. It's just not, hasn't been looked at the way that we're looking at this with, with Picasso coming to the table. You know, another, another key thing is that these desperate people that, that are going to come into our neighborhood are going to disrupt our neighborhood. But I think it's important to not remember that, you know, that these co-owners can choose who, you know, they can come to the table and choose who they want to buy this house with. So it could be friends, it could be family members, it could be coworkers, but they can choose who, you know, who, who is buying this home if they got to that point. And I think, you know, the, the most important thing, I think at the end of the day is, there was the feedback on how this is going to take away from the community and from affordable housing. And, and I, I don't really think that's the case. I see it that the, instead of having four, five, or six people go and buy less than medium-priced homes in the area as second homes, we're going to have those four, five, and six people upgrade and be able to purchase a much larger, more expensive home than what they were originally planning. So we're not going to pull stock out of the lower-cost homes that are available in the community. And, and that this is a barrier to, to homeownership for, you know, only for the elites. Well, I think just the history that we've already seen that's been presented with us, 30% of the current Picasso clients are non-white, or they're identified as LGBTQ. So, you know, we're, it's not something that is just a pure elite-class opportunity. And I think it really creates an opportunity to remove barriers for people to have that second homeownership. So I think, I think we're going the right direction, and I appreciate staff and Picasso working on the, the proposed ordinance with the few additions that we definitely get added in. I think it's looking, I think it's looking really good. So thank you.
Any other comments? I do have comments. I think by nature, this is for elites. Even if you split 1.8 million eight ways, you're still talking about buying a second home for $225,000. And, you know, as an attorney in this city and as the mayor, I can't even get a loan for $225,000 to buy a house, let alone find one for $225,000. And I need one year round, not just six times a year. I'm very concerned about the way that we're moving with housing in not just Palm Springs or California, but the entire United States. We talk a lot about housing, and the reality is, I've said this many, many times, housing is not a human right. Should it be? Yes, absolutely. But we are further eroding that and moving away from that as we continue to allow for these types of, of deals and this, and deciding that it is, that owning a second home is something that everyone should be able to do, when we're still trying to house so many people in our community in a very basic way. So I think this is the height of capitalism, and my very liberal, progressive roots are certainly showing on this one, but I, I can't possibly support anything like this. It is hard enough to support vacation rentals in their current stance. It's hard enough to know that we have so many people that do own second homes that they don't use. It's hard enough that half of the units in my condo complex are vacant when people are living on the street. This is, this to me is just continuing to tell people that they need a second home, that they need this additional luxury. And it's, it's really a small fraction of people who are, this is within reach for, and everyone else just continues to suffer, and we're, the gap of the rich and the poor continues to broaden every day. And I know that you all come in good faith, but I can't support projects like this. Does staff have the direction that they need on this item?
I think we do, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we are moving on then to city council and city manager requests and upcoming agenda development. I think we were all handed a tentative upcoming meeting schedule. City manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So for March 9th, our next regular meeting, Thursday, March 9th, we have the swearing in of our new city manager, Scott Stiles. So we'll have a presentation for that. Then we have two public hearings and four business legislative items for an estimated three hours and 45 minutes of, of major items in addition to our consent agenda, which is always very full. So we have the Rios Project Zone Amendment, Tefra Hearing, Public Arts Commission Decision, Appeal, Sidewalk Vending Ordinance, Environmentally Preferable Purchasing Policy, and our financial audit reports. Then we move to March 23rd, the next regularly scheduled meeting. We have the Dream Hotel, the CDBG Annual Action Plan, which you gave a direction on this evening. It'll be its first public hearing. That will continue to flesh out that agenda. You'll see more things added. I've already noted a few that we've talked about here tonight. So this will continue to flesh out, and we are scheduling a visioning session for April 3rd, so.
Thank you very much. Does council have any comments about this upcoming agenda? Councilmember DeHart?
We're already looking at it being very, very long. Is there, is there any one of these, is the sidewalk vending ordinance a time-sensitive item?
Yes and no. We continue to receive many complaints about our existing sidewalk vendors.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, okay, sorry.
But again, we could push it for one meeting and I.
Yeah. No, I wasn't connecting the dots. I'm sorry. And then how about the Public Arts Commission Appeal? Is that time-sensitive?
That one is time-sensitive.
It is.
I, I will just point out that the agenda was slated to be longer at our, for this meeting, and we are getting out just after 10:00. And this one is slated to be much shorter, this next one.
Yeah, well, I think 10 o'clock is still too long for us to be meeting with staff here, too.
Oh, councilmember DeHart, you haven't been here.
I've watched plenty, and that's why I'm going to continue to advocate that we don't plan long meetings. Yeah, well, if there was any one that wasn't time-sensitive, I would, I would like to see us move it to the next meeting.
Do we have any upcoming, oh, councilmember Holstidge, go ahead. Thank you so much. I'd love, I think I raised this last time, I'm sure staff is working on it, but I'd love a way or a place where we can see what the requests have been of council so that we know it's not, I know it's not going into the ether, but if I get this, I'm going to ask for my things again until they get on this list. And so it would be helpful to at least know, I don't know if it's now in the minutes of when council votes on bringing something forward on the agenda, but I'd love to see a more comprehensive list. Yeah, and, and to make that note, too, we do have a larger list, right, that the prior council had been working off of, which is something that we want to discuss at our strategic planning, but we have brought forth items this council that we voted on and said that we would want on the agenda. And so I think those are the ones that we'd like to at least see here, knowing that that longer list is going to require further discussion at another time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Like, for example, I asked for, we had asked for the TOT, for the Housing Fund item, so I know you noted that that will be coming forward. I think I also had asked, and I think we voted, to have the $10 million in Affordable Housing Fund come forward so we can spend down our money that we're sitting on. I hate to sit on $10 million for affordable housing for a year. We could have at best invested it, right? So I want to see that come forward. And then I do have another request, if I can, you know, I, you know, we had also talked about like a living wage policy, so I, I know those things didn't go away, but it'd be great to have at least what we're formally voting on to add to this list as just, you know, uncalendered. Thank you. You raised this in your comments in the budget, but I wanted to raise it as an agenda item if there's support, is reviewing the cannabis tax. I know the city of Palm Desert and the city of Cathedral City have reduced their tax rates and reviewed their cannabis ordinances. Some are at least even halving their cannabis tax, so I think it's at least ripe for a discussion to review.
I can just add, I, I actually suggested a review of the whole cannabis industry.
Okay.
In, in here, because the, whether it's the number of permits, what the effect might have on, on commercial real estate, on, on code enforcement issues, and, and more of a holistic view of how, we, we only approved this six, seven years ago, and is that right?
Well, we did do an update on the ordinance itself only about two years ago or so, but that was really specific towards what the exceptions are for separation. It was more a planning issue, so I agree with you, like an analysis of the barriers for the industry and how the permits are, and just an analysis overall.
And how do we ensure that we can be a healthy business going forward? It's a brand-new industry.
Yeah. And perhaps that would go to the visioning session. It doesn't have to be added to a list for April, but it would be nice to add it to the list if there's majority support.
If we have two, if there's a third, we can add it to this current council's list, and the previous list will be our visioning list.
Thank you.
Is that what I heard, Mayor?
I support a ta, a conversation on, on the taxes, not a comprehensive conversation immediately, but I certainly support bringing the conversation to the table about reducing the taxes.
I want to see the conversation bigger, so now I'm not sure how to do this, because.
And I said, right now, immediately.
I don't want to just do the taxes alone.
Yeah.
That's, that's my vote, is so, no, I'm not sure.
And, and, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in, in seeing more about cannabis, but I do think with our upcoming strategic planning session, this might be a good time, that would be probably a good time for us to figure out exactly what we want our scope to be on that item.
And just about to go, the TOT tax issue for housing, does that have to be a full agenda item discussion?
Yeah, that would, yes, that would be a staff report on that policy.
For the cannabis issue, just if I can, it seems like the tax rate itself is timely, right? So how long will we go if other jurisdictions are reducing their tax, if that's something we want to consider? So I'm okay either way, but I would love to, I'm sure we'll talk about it in visioning overall, but, you know, staff's input in when it should come forward. Agreed. Do we have any other agenda requests at this time? Okay. I think we're moving on then to council comments. Does anyone have comments? No? Councilmember DeHart and then Mayor Potem.
Huge hats off and kudos to One PS for recognizing one of our city employees for all the work that she does and has done to support One PS through the years. Jasmine Sullivan-Waits is being recognized during the Black History Parade on Saturday for her outstanding contributions to One PS. So I appreciate One PS for recognizing Jasmine, and thank Jasmine for the incredible job she does for the city.
I'd just like to make a comment about what an incredible time February is in Palm Springs and the different types of groups that are here. We had this hot, very high-end cart fair, we had Modernism Week, Black History Month, been doing events all month. We're going to have the International Bear Convergence, all in February, which shows what a great diversity our city has, and we welcome all these groups, and, and we thank them all for coming to our city. I would also just make, like to make a comment and thank the mayor for her public statement on the anti-Semitic and hate crime issue. We, we had a difficult situation where somebody had attacked, made, made violent attacks against Jewish people in Los Angeles and escaped to this, to the valley, and fortunately, police throughout the whole valley worked together with LA to catch the person before anything happened. And, and the mayor made a very important statement on this to the Jewish community that was very well received. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all. I hope that the public will join us at the Black History Parade on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. I do understand that there is a, my words are failing me. There, there, if it rains too much, they'll move it. But, but hopefully it's just a sprinkle, and we'll all get to enjoy it together. Very much looking forward to that. With that, we will adjourn the city council meeting, and the next regular city council meeting will be held on March 9th, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. Good night.